Will you please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barnwell.
Here.
Falcone.
Horton.
Here.
House.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Mayor Blum.
Item number one, proclamation declaring April 22, 2007 as Santa Barbara Dance Day.
Knows how I just sashayed up here?
Yes, I know that was very good, Marty.
That was getting better.
Well, you were in one of our classes on Sunday.
Yeah, I did have to take some dancing lessons.
How about that?
I know, okay. Santa Barbara Dance Day, April 22. Creativity in dance and the arts is a necessary component to celebration and quality of life. Our community has many talented and skilled dancers, artists who share their joy of dance. Santa Barbara Dance Alliance has served its mission for 28 years to bring dance to the community and the community to dance, sharing all forms of dance, supporting all studios, choreographers, choreographers, I haven't had my coffee yet, performers and dance lovers. In celebration of National Dance Week, April 20 to 29, Santa Barbara Dance Alliance will offer 25 introductory classes at eight studios for a dollar a class on April 22. So, we're going to name this day, April 22, as Santa Barbara Dance Day. We encourage all members of the community to avail themselves of the joys of dance. And there you go, Julie.
And well, they did. Well, they did, yes. Yes, we had, we had at least, we haven't had all the tally in, but we have at least 180, probably 200 people that came and took classes for a buck a class. Yeah, that's it. Okay, so next year, you guys are going to dance with us. Yeah, thank you so much. Thanks for your support of the arts and for dance and acknowledging it. Thanks.
Item number two, proclamation declaring April 23 through 29, 2007 as Cover the Uninsured Week.
Carol, if you want to come up too? Right after. Let me put these down here, sorry. Now in its fifth year, Cover the Uninsured has served as a national platform for discussion and debate about the need to provide for America's uninsured and to make this issue a priority. Over the past five years, healthcare premiums have risen five and a half times as fast as general inflation and four times as fast as workers' earnings. Eight of 10 people who are uninsured are in working families with the percentage of employers offering health insurance at less than 60% and decreasing each year. Insured children are more likely to get the care they need when they need it, and healthy children are better prepared to learn in school and succeed in life. Despite past efforts of public health organizations, safety net clinics, and public insurance programs, the number of persons without insurance or with only limited insurance continues to grow. So, as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, we proclaim this week as Cover the Uninsured Week and encourage the members of our community to involve themselves in the national and state debate that could extend health insurance coverage for all our residents. And I'm going to give this to Peter Conlon right here. And Peter, you might want to say some things.
Thank you very much for the proclamation. This is an issue which is not going to go away. The problem continues to get worse. This is the fifth year for Cover the Uninsured. If we don't do something to have real reform, and that means a basic restructuring of the system, we'll be back here in 20 years talking about the same problems. So, thank you for your recognition, and I'll have some comments later in the public comment period. But, one last thing, on June 7, we're going to have a march, starting at 5 o'clock here at De La Gara Plaza. Try to get as many people out as possible to draw attention to the fact that our healthcare system is falling apart and needs changes.
Hold me there.
It'll be 5 o'clock in the afternoon, Thursday, June 7.
This is a kind of public comment. Do you want me to wait? Okay. It addresses Cover the Uninsured Week 2. Mayor Blum and councilmembers, my name is Carol Marks, and I am speaking for the Santa Barbara League of Women Voters. The League wishes to thank the City Council for your official recognition of Cover the Uninsured Week, and we wish to add our voice to the many other healthcare reform activists who come here today and to other California communities throughout this week. Last week, the statewide league released a policy paper called Evaluation Criteria for Healthcare Reform Proposals. Heading the list of elements the League of Women Voters of California can support is universal access. The League has long held a position in support of single payer universal healthcare reform as sponsored by Senator Sheila Kuehl's bill, California Senate Bill 840. Our thanks to the Santa Barbara City Council for endorsing the single payer concept of SB 840. Single payer provides universal, affordable, and comprehensive coverage on a continuous basis to all. It ensures maximum choice of provider and exemplifies shared responsibility that is equitable, accessible, and requires contributions from individuals and employers that are related to their ability to pay. Because it includes robust methods to control costs, it is sustainable over time. It makes significant contributions to improving the quality of our healthcare system, and because it is patient-centered, it will bring measurable improvements to health outcomes. In this state legislative session, we are fortunate to see an active interest in finding a solution to the severe crisis affecting healthcare in California. Several proposals have been brought forward, with Senator Kuehl's SB 840 considered the gold standard by those engaged in the policy discussion. We recognize that an opportunity may exist to improve the situation in the short term by supporting proposals that move us forward toward achieving the ultimate solution of single payer. To determine the best solution without accepting compromises that do not protect the most vulnerable among us from further deterioration in their access to affordable and quality care, the League of Women Voters California has developed the Evaluation Criteria for Healthcare Reform Proposals. We are attaching a copy of the criteria to this statement in hopes that it may be helpful to you in considering your advocacy positions on the dueling healthcare proposals in California. And it's on the back of the statement, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Item number three, proclamation declaring April 25, 2007 as America 500 Birthday.
I'll almost introduce myself, I thought that must be you. We have the Professor Oliver Chadwick, who is a professor and chair of the UCSB Department of Geography, and thank you for coming. This kind of popped up on our email list, but it seemed so neat that we decided to put out a proclamation, and we're glad you're here to accept it. This year marks the 500th birthday of the geographical naming of the Americas North and South as separate land masses. In 1507, German cartographer Martin Walzsee Mueller, Walzsee Mueller, is that close enough? Published the first map to use the name America that appeared on the coast of Brazil and Argentina in recognition of Florentine astronomer Marigo Vascochi. That map is the first printed depiction of the Earth as a globe and of the image of the Western Ocean, now known as Pacific Ocean. So, today, April 25, we name this America 500 Birthday during the World Geography Month, and in doing so, we encourage an educational opportunity to understand the origins of indigenous, immigrant, and uprooted populations of Santa Barbara and of America. So, thank you so much. It's kind of very cool, there.
Great, well, thank you very much. We're, the Department of Geography in Santa Barbara is, in fact, one of the top-rated geography departments in the country, and as such, we spend a lot of time worrying, doing research on the nature of environmental change and the impact that environmental change has on humans. And of course, environmental change had a massive impact on humans 500 years ago, on people in, Americans at that time, and it still does. And this is globally now, we research this, and we're, of course, very pleased to have the city of Santa Barbara recognize the importance of this line of work. So, thank you.
Item number four, proclamation declaring the 5 and 6, 2007 as American Cancer Society Relay for Life Days.
Hi. Looks like we're going to have some fun with this one, huh? On May 5 and 6, American Cancer Society is the nation's largest volunteer health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as major health problems through financial support and education. Since 1913, it has funded research that has contributed to every known method of detecting and treating cancer, thereby increasing the cancer survival rate from 10% to more than 50%. Cancer is a group of diseases characterized by the uncontrolled growth and spread of abnormal cells, which can result in premature death and which is predicted to strike one out of every three Americans. The Relay for Life Event, oops, I skipped one here, an estimated 133,225 newly diagnosed cases of cancer will occur in California this year, of which approximately 1,775 are expected to occur in Santa Barbara County. The Relay for Life Event financially benefits the American Cancer Society's research and support programs, and educationally benefits our local citizens as well as providing a community networking opportunity for those united in the goal of making a difference in the battle against cancer. May 5 and 6, we're going to name them as Relay for Life Days throughout Santa Barbara and recognize the Purple Ribbon Campaign in support of those living with cancer and to honor those who have lost their life to this dreaded disease. And the city has put forth a team, I don't know if you know about it, but we've, oh, okay, yes, for the Breast Cancer Center, and we've got former Assemblymember Hannibeth Jackson is on our team, she just joined, and we've got Janet Wolfe, Second District Supervisor, and we have Susan Rose, a former Second District Supervisor, and myself. So, we are all going to be walking with you. We probably should run, but walking is the best we can do there. And your team captain is Julie, she's a lot of fun. Well, I want to thank you for your continued support in the fight against cancer. Thank you very much. It affects us all, and especially, I really loved Mayor Marty Blum's talk last year when she came out, and she was very, very encouraging. This is a disease that affects everybody. And last year, we raised $117,000. $117,000. This year, we want to raise $135,000, and it takes a lot of money to provide patients with the care that it takes to make their sick time comfortable or find the cures for the diseases, which is really some, a major focus of the ACS, American Cancer Society. For more information, you can dial 1-800-ACS-2345, or log on to cancer.org, and you can see, they have funded over 40 Nobel laureates, and it's a wonderful, wonderful project. So, we hope you come out and have fun, because it is a lot of fun. What time and where? May 5, Bishop Diego High School at 10 o'clock is our opening ceremonies. So, anyway, we camp out for 24 hours and get to know everybody in the community, it's a lot of fun. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we have a few public comments. Norman Salzman, first, to be followed by David.
Some time ago, I asked the office of the director here to put me on the agenda, tell my story, and I was refused. I wasn't given a reason why, I don't know why. This is the first time since I moved in the state, in the city, to 1946 that I've had this problem. Anyway, I'm going to have to use my two minutes for the next 10 weeks to tell you what's happening. It's the old hedge problem again, and I have two tenants that are being inconvenienced very much and at risk in trying to get a line of sight of where they live to come out into the driveway, onto the street. And I've been unsuccessful so far, but in going through the archives, I found that on July the 11th, 1967, an emergency measure on ordinance number 3234 was put into effect here in the City Council. Do any of you know about it? Nobody knows about it?
Not by number.
Not by that. Well, neither did the risk management people know about it until I brought their attention. Anyway, I'll read it, read it in a few minutes there, it doesn't take very long. This ordinance shall take effect immediately as an emergency measure for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. The facts constituting the urgency thereof are declared to be as follows. The apparent or suitable vision of intersections creates a traffic hazard to persons traveling on such intersecting streets. And under contemporaneous interpretations of existing ordinances relating to the subject, permits have been issued for the construction of such walls or fences which have resulted in traffic vision impairment. And what I want to know is that anything that's happened before this measure was passed, is that deleted or taken or disregarded? And we start anew on July 11, 67? So, what's the interpretation of these laws?
Mr. Salzman, you're tying this up, but this, didn't you just take this to court with the city?
Yes, and I, they refused to let me collect $6,000 for you, which I don't need. But they didn't touch on the dozens of pages I gave to the judge. He completely ignored it. He did raise one question, though. He said, "What would the city do if they were sued?" And he didn't have an answer. That is, your risk management people.
Okay.
Well, I know about that.
Okay, thank you. David Homeless will be followed by Nancy McCready.
Do I get an answer on this or not?
Well, not here, because it's not on our agenda. And I can talk to you in my office, but I'm running this meeting right now.
Well, I'll come see you then.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm turning over my two minutes to Bob Hanson.
That's fine.
Does that mean I get four minutes?
No.
I can add.
Well, I don't see your.
Just two minutes in my two minutes.
Yeah, but you didn't fill out a, oh, yes, you did.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Well, go ahead and be brilliant in your time, please.
My country is a sweet land of liberty, of the I see. Well, I'm here to talk about the conditional use permit at the Santa Barbara Homeless Shelter on Casete Street, and one of the conditional use permit criteria was never met, which was to have access to a restroom 24 hours a day. And at one point, I rented a porta potty and put it down on the Milpus area down there, and it lasted for about a month and a half until the city called on a Friday and said, "Hey, do you have a permit to have this?" And so, a mar board called me and said, "You have to have a permit." And so, I go, "I don't have a permit." So, anyway, they took it away. But it did work for about a month and a half. People used it. Now, there could have been somebody prostitution, there could have been someone doing drugs. I talked to some of the business people, they go, "You know what? That happens everywhere in this area." But people did use the bathroom. And so, my point is, how about the shelter? Why couldn't somebody that basically goes there and eats and has an ID card anytime, because they're down there eating and stuff, and they live in the area somewhat now, knock on the door and say, "Here's my ID, can I use the restroom?" And somebody could maybe watch to make sure they're only there for five minutes or whatever, and then we wouldn't have human waste in that area. Hepatitis is rampant in our country, and we don't want to have, you know, be a bad neighbor, and lots of other reasons. It's just not, you know, it doesn't make you a good person, too, to sit there and have human waste around and this and that. So, I'd like to have us uphold the conditional use permit at the shelter in some way they could work this out. Now, they're always complaining, "Oh, all these people act up, they do different..." Well, at the door, you're not drunk, you're not acting up, you're coming in, you have an ID, you're a member of this community that goes there and eats, you could use the restroom. So, I hope we can work this out somehow, and I will be back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I get another two minutes later?
Oh, thank you. Buy you more popcorn.
And item 15.
Nancy McCready will be followed by Ed Mannan.
I want you to Nancy McCready.
Good Lord. Okay, hi, you guys. I have something a little entertaining here. It's something that I wrote, it's a report that I wrote in this part of it, and I just wanted to read it to you. As the homeless try to survive it daily, the city merrily creates more ordinances to criminalize poverty. How does this affect the homeless? Criminalization creates another, quote, "restriction to growth," unquote, ruling. It just makes it harder for the homeless to stabilize and plant their roots to grow. We get pushed from one end of town to another while gleefully the pompied ass-rich get to feel vindicated after making their complaints. Mental health patients abound on our streets while taxpayer dollars get eaten up in administrative costs. We grow think tanks and membership clubs, all inspired by our elected officials who like to educate themselves about an issue. Maybe someday, they might realize that the homeless person knows better than they do to solve the problems of homelessness. If one can't afford a million dollars, a million dollars for a home, we might hear, "Get out, leave, we don't want you here. Not everyone can afford to live here." It does not matter that some of our ancestors worked very hard to make Santa Barbara a lovely place for its future generations to come. We are finding that a new generation is selling out our fair city to local and in-town developers who seem to like seeing our community's vital charms destroyed through stupidity. As we canyonize our beautiful streets, we use, we lose the setback charm that has made our city so great. We are losing sight of the environment, the wild creatures who tried to live among us, all are slowly disappearing. Are they expendable? We feel so self-important in the way we live today, we should feel that we have far more problems to work on than just the homeless issue. At a future time in another dimension, we might take a look at what has been done to solve the homeless problem. The federal government has opened up federal lands to the Homesteading Act. The federal government has not only made cities and counties focus on a housing-first component as a solvent, but has created a couple of work programs brought forward from the past like the WPA and the CCC. It has made a mandatory draft of a two-year stint for young people not interested in the military or upper education. The state of California has built an investigation team to follow the progress of children in group homes, so no one has to be pushed out on the streets without work or educational skills just because they turn 18 years old. Arnold has created a new program for the state prison system. Trade schools abound in conjunction with the prisons. For the inmates who participate and graduate with a certificate in their new trade are found a job through a job seeker's program. He/she are given an early release and taken off of parole if he or she continues in their job placement for a year. This idea is also being looked into by the county of Santa Barbara for the two jails, both in the North and South Counties. The county has found a place for a 24-hour motor housing park for the people who live in their motor homes, vans, and cars. It is being run by the New Beginnings Counseling Center. Everyone participating in the motor housing park is paying rent up to $300 a month, has signed up for housing, and is awaiting a more permanent situation for themselves. The complaints from the people of Santa Barbara to the city council have diminished. The city of Santa Barbara has created a permit system that pays to the city coffers up to $100 for people who are waiting entry into the motor housing park. The city and county of Santa Barbara has contracted with the municipal transit district to build barracks-style housing for the chronically homeless. They are using agricultural plotted ground by the county clinics. The barracks are holding up to 15 men and have a kitchen and a group leader running each barrack.
You're running out of time.
Is that four minutes yet, honey?
Yeah, look at your, look at the.
Oh, God, I'm almost done.
Well, finish up.
Thank you. Anyway, since the land is owned for agriculture, a farm has been created so that the people living in the barracks are able to plant seed, grow, and sell the vegetables that are grown there. And coming back to the present time, I'd like to say that many of these ideas are just compiled from different people who have talked to me about solving the homeless issue. So, I just wanted to read that to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, public comment, consent calendar, anybody like to take something off of the consent calendar?
Then Peter Conlon also.
Oh, Peter Conlon, yeah. What'd I do, I probably tucked it in with his thing. Sorry, Peter, come on up, because I know you filled one out. I don't know what I did with it. Okay, thank you, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Again. I just wanted to bring you up to date on what is happening legislatively. You did ask in your endorsement letter to Senator Kuehl about the financing, and SB 1014 is the finance bill, it's been introduced. The actual tax rates have not been put on it, but the intent is to work with the other proposals, the other people in Sacramento, other politicians in Sacramento, in trying to work out and to compare what does this proposal cover, who does this proposal leave out, how much does it cost, and so on. The general figures for the payroll tax, which would be the main financer of this, have already been modeled, and they're going to be around 8% for employers and around 4% for employees. And actually, the California School Employees Association is going around to various school districts and comparing what they're paying now to what they would pay under the Kuehl system. And many of them are coming up with savings in the millions of dollars. L.A. Unified School District is saving a minimum of $125 million the first year in premiums. Various school districts will save more or less, depending on whether they're now covering part-time employees. Of course, there won't be as much difference if they're already saying, "We're not going to cover you for the services." But any school district that has a good package and covers their employees, most of their employees is going to show savings. I thought it might be interesting for the city to run a comparison on what your total payroll is and what percentage of that you're now paying for healthcare insurance premiums, and running the figures for a combined 12%, and see whether there are savings there. The first hearing on 10/14 is going to be tomorrow at, yeah, tomorrow, I'm sorry, I don't have the time, I don't know whether it's morning or afternoon, so that might be interesting. And one last quick thing, in terms of other proposals, there are lots of proposals, everybody wants to cover the kids. We need to be sure that whatever proposal gets adopted is a step toward covering everybody. If we buy into the system that we have, absolutely have to keep the private insurers, we're going to bankrupt ourselves in trying to run the system. The overhead costs are just incredible. So, thank you very much for your time and your interest.
Okay, thank you for your work on this. Thank you. Now, consent calendar, anybody want to take something off? Seen no one? Can I have?
Move consent calendar.
Oh, you have some to read, wait. Go ahead, Brenda, and then we'll.
Item number seven, records destruction for Administrative Services Department. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by Administrative Services Department and the Human Services, Human Resources Division. Item number eight, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the police department in the business office and in the offices of the Emergency Services and Internal Affairs. Item number nine, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara making a decision and expressing certain findings concerning an appeal from a decision of the city planning commission regarding a tentative subdivision map for an application of Rick Jeffrey 1776 Eucalyptus Hill Road. And item number 10, recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara authorizing the filing of a claim with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments for allocation of Transportation Development Act funds for fiscal year 2008.
Okay, now we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's the consent calendar. Report from the Ordnance Committee?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We met today at noon to discuss two items. The first one was the amendments to the municipal code. The first one was the amendments to the municipal code with regard to campaign finance disclosures, and we forwarded that on to the city council. And the second one was the modification of the unscheduled hauling permits, which is the roll-off boxes that we are requiring be taken to the recycling centers now. And we have forwarded that draft ordinance on to the council as well, so hopefully we will be able to start implementing that in the near future. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Finance committee, I'm sorry, Mr. Horton.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The finance committee met at 12:00 today. We discussed the March 31, 2007 investment report, and we also discussed the finance committee review of the two-year financial plan for fiscal years 2008, 2009, and we'll be recommending those on to council.
Okay. Thank you. Item 15, please.
Item number 15, city parking lots for inclusion in the Safe Overnight RV Parking Program. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara establishing a process for the transitional use of recreational vehicles as temporary overnight accommodations in certain zones of the city and in certain city public parking lots as part of the Safe Overnight RV Parking Program as originally established in City Resolution Number 05-072.
Okay. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Browning Allen, Transportation Manager in the Public Works Department. Before council is consideration to expand the use of city parking lots for the inclusion of the Safe Parking Program, which is currently being used for the overnight parking of recreational vehicles in our community. Currently, the only lot that's allowed to be used for the Safe RV Parking Program is the Carrillo commuter lot, which is at the corner of Carrillo Street and Castillo Street. And Mr. Olson will point that out in a minute. I'll just put a...
Oh, just a...
Here we go.
There we go.
So the Carrillo lot, the commuter lot, is in the upper left-hand corner of the map. Currently, five RVs are allowed to park in that lot. At this point in time, only one RV has been parked in there on a regular basis. This has been before the city council ordinance committee on two separate occasions, as well as the full council when we amended the ordinance. And several lots were considered for the expansion of this program. We looked at the Cota commuter lot, City Hall parking lot, 630 Garden Street, the 1230 Chapala, you have the Louie's Lowry Teen Center lot, the visitors' lot at Cabrillo and Garden Street, the depot lot, and some property, RDA-owned property over on Quarantina at Casique Street. The ordinance committee did narrow down the list to the Carrillo commuter lot, the Cota lot, and the City Hall parking lot. We were directed to take that before the downtown parking committee to get input from the parking committee about the expansion of the program in the City Hall parking lot and the Cota lot, as well as adding RVs to the Carrillo lot. Parking committee did not recommend using the City Hall parking lot because of the high usage. Did recommend expanding in the Carrillo lot by adding two additional RVs in the Carrillo commuter lot. And did recommend eventually, after two meetings, the Cota lot with a provision that would be on a one-year trial, to make sure it is working appropriately. There's concerns about the residential units adjacent to the lot, as well as new commercial units that are going to go into the new sleep center. So that was in the proviso. They also recommended that the Harbor Commission consider the visitor center lot at Cabrillo and Garden Street, and that did go before the Harbor Commission. And the Harbor Commission did not support that. Mr. Brightley is here, who can answer any questions. There is a memo from the Harbor Commission regarding their concerns about that lot. They don't feel it's an appropriate use of that lot. At the last downtown parking committee meeting, we did discuss this, and we did receive a number of complaints from a resident, Mrs. Livingston, regarding New Beginnings not complying with the terms and conditions of the agreement. And parking staff did address all those concerns, and have been in communication with New Beginnings. And probably the major violation that we saw occurring was there was one RV in there that was operating the generator at night, and they're not allowed to because it disturbs the neighborhood. After the second offense, that RV was relocated to a different facility. The other ones were more in the areas of not displaying their permit, having visitors, not parking in proper locations, and staff has been working closely with New Beginnings to address those concerns. The recommendation before council is to go ahead and expand the program, adding additional RVs to the Carrillo commuter lot, and doing the Cota commuter lot and the Garden Street lot on a trial basis, a one-year trial. My suggestion is that we bring this back to the downtown parking committee and the Harbor Commission in early 2008 for a report. The report may be from both New Beginnings as well as staff on our observations on how well the agreement is working. And then bring it back to city council sometime in March. And the council, if you will, you could either take a vote to continue the program or to discontinue it if you feel it's working appropriately or not working appropriately. That is the nutshell of my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Monsieur Montez from the city attorney's office is present, as well as Don Olson, to answer any questions the council might have.
Okay. Do we have any, I've got any questions from up here? I've got several requests to speak. Mr. Barnwell?
You didn't give any comment on the pending lawsuit and how it may play into the necessity of our doing this. Would you be so kind as to give us a little background on that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Barnwell, it might be appropriate for me to respond to that, and it just gives me a chance to also mention some additional background that, you know, that is a context helpful, I think, possible. I know the council knows this, but this is part of something that in its most recent aspects started more than five years ago, when the city was grappling with how to deal with what appeared to be an influx of people living in RVs parked on the streets. And the council formed an RV, I think the name was the RV Task Force. And they had, they spent a lot of time and a lot of work. It was a very broad-based task force with council members, city staff, members of the community, discussing different aspects of this problem. And I think we have to say that, and this is one of those examples of a complex problem that is not susceptible to simple solution. And I think in that five years, the city's learned that to address this, we're going to have a multifaceted response. But going back to 2002, and essentially the summer of 2002, when the task force recommendations came back to the city council, there were several recommendations, and I just think it might be helpful to go back over some of those. One of the things was to really dedicate city staff and city resources, particularly money, to addressing what was a loss of SRO housing in the city for various reasons. And I, you know, personally, I think the city's been somewhat successful in addressing that with the El Carrillo project, also the Castillo-Carrillo Housing Authority project, Las Fuentes. Although that project began before this, the El Carrillo project clearly was directly a result of that recommitment to, by the city to create SROs. That was one aspect of it. We also looked at permitting churches and nonprofits to have RVs in their lots. It's another aspect of it, and as far as I know, we've heard that's been a fairly successful aspect of it. I don't know that the city received a whole lot of complaints about churches and nonprofits allowing RVs to use their parking lots overnight. We also focused on some of our internal regulations restrictions on the use of parking lots. This was primarily in the waterfront lots, where we created, we sort of tightened up our hourly restrictions on RVs and lots, and we created designated RV spaces because we had, I think, some legitimate concerns about the abuse of the waterfront lots by RV users. And at the same time, we, you know, the city for at least 25 years has had an ordinance that prohibits living in an RV, habitating in an RV overnight. And we looked at a possible approach that was somewhat unique in creating a citywide parking ordinance where it would be a parking citation if you were, your RV was parked on the street during certain nighttime hours, or parked on the street for extended periods of time. And that ordinance was the subject of a legal challenge, and that's an aspect of this in retrospect that really did not prove successful, primarily because the judge in dealing with that legal challenge found that the city, under the state vehicle code requirements, needed to post virtually every blockface where that ordinance was going to apply. And I don't think anyone from the council on down was interested in posting the entire city with RV signs about RVs being prohibited overnight. So as part of that litigation, what the city looked at as part of a compromise resolution of that litigation was pulling that parking ordinance back to just the waterfront area. In fact, the council did adopt that ordinance several weeks ago, where now the parking restriction only applies in the waterfront, essentially below the freeway between Castillo and the easterly city boundaries, including the Coast Village area. Finally, this aspect of the city's program is being reexamined. At the time of the task force in 2002, the council rejected the concept of using city lots for overnight RV use. But I would have to say, my recollection is it wasn't a strong rejection. It was something that, we will look at that, depending on how this works out on the other aspects, particularly the churches and the nonprofits. And I think it was in about 2003 or 2004, after the county had permitted some RVs in their lots, that the city decided to allow RVs in the Carrillo commuter lot. And which brings us to today, where, again, another aspect of this, and another aspect of the proposed compromise settlement on this litigation, is that the city looked at adding city lots to that program, in addition to the Carrillo commuter lot, that we look at other city lots that the city may feel, frankly, the city council may feel is appropriate for this sort of thing. So the staff has spent the last few months going to the downtown parking committee, the Harbor Commission, working among ourselves and talking to members of the community and New Beginnings, the nonprofit that's designated to enforce this program for the city, about where this might work, with additional lots. And that brings you to the recommendations that's summarized by Browning Allen, and today to that point of where we might look at other city lots where this could work.
Okay. Thank you. I have any other questions? I have several requests to speak. Dr. Lenker, we'll start with you, because you're part of the Counseling Center, the New Beginnings.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, I want to be here today as a resource to you to answer any last-minute questions or concerns you might have about going ahead with this project. Obviously, I support it. I think it's something that's very much in need. Just to give you an update, we have 55 spaces designated for RV parkers, and all but a few in Isla Vista have been full. And for whatever reason, maybe the publicity on this case or not, in the last week or so, we've gotten four or five more additional requests, and now we're filling up the Isla Vista spaces. The Isla Vista spaces are less popular for two reasons. Number one, Ivy is very noisy, and the folks living in RVs have difficulty getting a good night's rest because of all the noise. And second, of course, it's kind of out of the main corridor of downtown, where a lot of the RV folks need to use services and receive the opportunities that are available on our program in terms of case management. I did prepare for you today a kind of a step-by-step process of how we go about implementing the program and getting people integrated into it. And I realized that I put it in my envelope back here, so I'll go back and get it when I'm finished, and then pass it out to you. But essentially, it walks you through what happens from the beginning all the way to the end, when people hopefully are either placed into housing or given opportunities for jobs. So I have that as an additional piece for you to have today, for you to review. Hope that's useful to you. And again, I'm here to answer any questions or concerns. I will just make one comment, and that is I know you've gotten some recent publicity, or material, I mean, regarding the county lot, and there's some misunderstandings about the county lot. They have a very different contractual arrangement with us than the city does. That was part of why there was some confusion on my part in not realizing that a generator was not allowed in the Carrillo-Castillo lot. But all the activities that have been outlined and the complaints that are made actually are technically legal in the county lot, because the county lot is an open lot on the weekends, and up to this point, anybody can go in and do anything that is lawful in a general way in those lots. So we have people who are using those lots on the weekend, the county lot on the weekend. They are, in a sense, camping out. It's a concern that we have, it's a concern the county has. We're working with the county on that, but I wanted to take that issue, if we can, off the table here, since obviously it doesn't apply to your jurisdiction.
Okay. Ms. Snyder?
Can you just give us an update of how many people in the program have transitioned out of the program and into housing?
Well, in the last year, we haven't actually distinguished those that are actually in the RV program, who were transitioning to housing, and those that are in our general homeless outreach program. But this year, so far, we have placed 45 people into housing.
Any other questions for Dr. Lenker? Yes, Mr. House?
Yes, Dr. Lenker. In our staff report, it talks about a funding request, and although I don't believe that's for us to make a decision on today, could you describe to me what that's intended to accomplish and why you would be wanting to make a request for additional funds?
We have essentially run this program on a shoestring for the last two and a half years, based on private donations we've received for the program. And as a result, we provide, I would say semi-weekly monitoring of the sites. We have one staff member who does a go-around twice a week and just checks in on lots. There's been a request from the city staff that we provide a program that will be more comprehensive, that will include a 724 availability. So if any issue were to pop up any time of day, any day of the week, 365 days a year, our staff would be on call and available to come out and respond to anything that would happen. In addition, our staff would be going to each lot every morning and every evening to monitor people checking in, checking out, and providing case management services. We would also be providing services in the M1 and the CM1 zone for those people who are being in the, quote, "night watchman" category in those properties. We'd also be involved in going to the property owners and trying to get more participation in those areas. So it's our goal to get as many people off the street into suitable parking in the evening as possible, and those funds would be used to create staff in order to accomplish that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lenker. We have Linda Miller, who will be followed by Nancy McCready.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am with Homes on Wheels, and I was part of the esteemed task force that has been aforementioned. I believe, if I remember correctly, it's been a little while, and I'm 50, by the way, things are dusty there, that it was up to the owners of the city and the county, the owners of the private property, the county, and the city to decide whether or not we could use these sites on weekends. We are also discussing the issue of generator use at these sites on the weekends, because many of us have children, school-aged children, which needs to see to do their homework or access their laptops. And if you don't want us pugging in to the city power, maybe we should be able to use our generators to be self-sufficient. We applaud the slow, tedious steps that is taken to get this far. We hope fervently that these 12 spaces open up, but I honestly wish to tell you that a good portion of your vehicular dwellers are disabled and families. They feel that they cannot be heard. Because we are poor, we will not be listened to, that we'll be run rush-hod over anyway. Again, I repeat, the greatest measure of a city is how she cares for her people. It doesn't say whether or not they're financially well-off or property-held. The people in general is what the city must take care of.
Okay. Thank you very much, Linda. Nancy McCready will be followed by, a second, Andrea Rosaleski.
I'm supportive of more parking spaces, but I really think that you people are going in the wrong direction. All of us are going in the wrong direction. We need a motor housing park to put these people off the streets day and night, because it's not doing the job that... it's not doing the job that we should do. And I'm just saying, I still think that we should have a motor housing park, I still think the county should get together with you guys and go back to looking for a place. And I think we should put the pressure on the county to do that, because we're not really making headway with the RV thing. And it doesn't help to criminalize these people. It just doesn't do that. It doesn't help them stabilize out one iota. The only thing that's going to help these people stabilize out is that 24-hour location. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Rosalinski, we don't clap in here. Andrea Rosalinski will be followed by Will Warwick, for Mike Foley.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. I thought I was going to speak in public comment, too, so I started, I wrote stuff that I, because I didn't finish last time I did my public comment. I wanted to bring up solutions, because last time I was talking, I was trying to make sense out of the, like, we were up at City College having a peace rally, and then there were kids, you know, killing each other downtown, and, you know, with the gang violence. And I have solutions, because I went to school, I was going to be a social worker or probation officer, but I've changed my major. And I know there's an event, I believe, next week.
Andrea, if you could focus in on the RV parking one, and I'll start. Sure, two minutes over. Okay?
Over? But I asked to talk for public comment, but he never called for any. Okay, so, okay, about the public, about the parking.
It says item 15 on your thing, so if you want to go ahead and say what you want to say, you've got about a minute and a half left. It's fine.
Okay. Yeah, well, I think, I would like to work, bring up solutions for working with at-risk youth, and I'd like to work with organizations using tools to redirect displaced anger. Like, we need to find volunteers, we can, I'm sure I can find people to donate drums, journals, and people to work with youth in organic farms, which naturally creates self-esteem, awareness, for, you know, tasting healthy choices in nutrition. And lastly, but most importantly, the calming effect of working with soil. I really have, yeah, a deep need to, I want to help working with youth as well as I can, as much as I can. And there are concerns I have, you know, obviously about the RV issue and all this, but I don't really want to go into that right now personally, because I, I'm going to get my Section 8 housing back, because I need housing, because I want to go to, yeah, continue with my education.
Okay.
But, yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
For your time.
Will Warwick will be followed by Tom Williams. And the last speaker will be Marshall Rose. Let's see, Tom Williams. Oh, there he is.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and fellow council members. Will Warwick, Program Services Manager, Carcasa Esperanza. Mike Foley called me a couple hours ago, and he had two meetings going on. He says, "I've got this meeting at City Council and this other really, really important meeting." And I said, "Well, what's this other really, really important meeting?" He says, "Well, you have to take notes for two hours." So here I am. Anyway, also, thank you also very much for that proclamation on Relay for Life Day. I am too a cancer survivor, as of January 2nd.
Good for you.
And I did also participate a couple of years ago in solving. On behalf of Mike and myself, yes, we both do agree on this expansion. We really strongly suggest it, and here I'm going to segue into this. Homelessness is a cancer, too, and it is curable. And this further expansion, anything and everything we can do to enhance the growth of this safe parking would be to all of our benefits. We mentioned about placing some of these people last week, and he mentioned the number, was it 45, 49? About a week and a half ago, a gal came into Carcasa Esperanza for lunch and said, "Thank you for all the services that we have provided," when she was there, too. She also was in a safe parking, and she's now at El Correo. So I can personally say I've seen the success and the gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Williams will be followed by, the last speaker will be Marshall Rose.
Afternoon, Madam Mayor and council. My name is Tom Williams, and I'm the newest member of the Downtown Parking Committee. Kind of getting an education, if you want to know the truth. We were asked to consider several parking lots, and we could only use the information that we brought to the meeting from our own experiences and information that we were given at the meeting. And we made a recommendation to expand the use on the Correo commuter lot, and it came to find out later on that there were some considerations that we weren't privy to. And the complaints and the responses from the New Beginnings, I think you probably all have got a copy of a letter from March 2nd from Brian Allen, and we were not privy to those complaints or those responses. Our consideration of the Correo commuter lot probably would have been different had we have known everything we know now. But that's hindsight. The rest of them, we, I personally learned that I will never, ever mention anything outside the purview of the Downtown Parking Committee, because I watched the Harbor Commission on TV, and they did everything but take our name in vain. And we should learn to keep our mouth shut, because our recommendation didn't show up exactly in the same form when it got down there. So we back off on that, it's not in our purview, and what you do is not our business either. We urge you to look at the staff recommendations. The two of them are on a provisional basis, the one that we have something to do with is a Cota lot. Please make sure that, if you do okay that one, that it is a provisional, and it doesn't become de facto, that it does come back a year. And lastly, there's a funding request, and we are the Downtown Parking Committee. My favorite thing, and I know everybody would like to hear it, but we are not a piggybank. We have a budget problem, too. There are unfunded, unrealized repairs that need to be done in the parking district, and our funds are scarce as everyone else, if not more so. And if you vote to expand, we will have made, the Downtown Parking will have made a substantial contribution by okaying the uses of the lot, and we feel that should be sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you. Marshall Rose will be the last speaker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Marshall Rose, and I'm here today as the Chair of the Downtown Parking Committee. Mr. Williams covered pretty much the Downtown Parking Committee's involvement, but just a little bit more background, when we did approve the safe parking program, originally approved the, or recommended to the council that they approve the safe parking program, the Correo commuter lot, we were very supportive, and we continue to be very supportive of the safe parking program. The issue of the responsibility of good behavior and the expectations of good behavior is an important one. I personally was not aware at the time that there was not going to be more supervision by New Beginnings. Maybe it was just an assumption on my part. So it fell to the parking staff in many respects, and as the complaints began to come in, the parking staff had to respond to it, and it did take considerable resources from the parking department. I think it's appropriate that the monitoring for the lots, the existing and the expanded, be done by an outside agency. I think New Beginnings is well-prepared to do something like that. Mr. Williams did mention that we made our recommendation to support and recommend to you the addition of two spaces in the Correo lot, the, I think it was three additional spaces, or three new spaces in the Cota commuter lot, and those would be provisional. I would suggest that whatever you end up proving, all be provisional. I think there should be an expectation that the RV dwellers and the agency overseeing them behave properly, and that's important. And I'm not talking about zero tolerance, everybody makes mistakes. But there should be expectations, and they should be at risk, like any of us are, if we don't do the right thing, and it's repetitive. So I think, even though we did hear a litany of complaints from a neighbor on the Correo parking lot, that the committee was generally supportive and recommending to you that we do go ahead and make these expansions. We did get out of our territory, because we were asked about the waterfront, and we just said, "We think that ought to be sent to the Harbor Commission," so I hope that wasn't taken too inappropriately. But the waterfront is a resource as well, and the parking department isn't here to solve all the social problems that we all face all the time. And on the funding request, I particularly am concerned about our budget. Over a year ago, we raised parking rates, and we did it thoughtfully, and we went through a long process. We have some very significant capital needs in front of us, we have operational needs, and our budget is pretty well-maxed out. This is not a huge amount of money that's being requested, but I think the precedent is a challenging one. I think if we were to fund this out of funds that need to go to the parking program, and my understanding is that we are not meeting our goals for this year, so we may be below the line. We may be below the line for this fiscal year, as well as next year, if the trend continues. So I would be, we are recommending not to fund this out of parking funds, as it works its way up to the Finance Committee and ultimately to council. You know that I've been involved in a lot of agencies, and as a board member, and very supportive of the human services. I think the agencies that deliver these services have a responsibility, for those in the community that are interested in supporting it, to bring forward those gifts and that philanthropy to support this type of program. The city can only do so much, and I know as a resource, the city is offering these spaces around the community, and the faith community is, and the private property owners. But I do think there has to be an expectation that there is some support from the agencies providing this, and New Beginnings does a terrific job. So I would be reluctant to say, well, the, excuse me, that the Downtown Parking Committee has the resources to do that. I think, as we look at our budget in the next 30 to 60 days, we're going to see that we're going to have some significant shortfalls. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no more speakers left, so it's to the city, I mean, to the council. Ms. Snyder, and then Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here and for a good, respectful hearing, and for various people who send emails ahead of time, and all that good stuff. This is, this is a hard population we're talking about, and so the answer to how to deal with housing, a basic need, is not going to be easy. It will remain difficult, and so it's no surprise to me that this issue comes up and there aren't questions and concerns. Where I come from is trying to get to, where do we want to be down the road in the future in terms of trying to reduce the level of homelessness, reduce the number of people living in vehicles, and into permanent supportive housing, if that's what they need, or just other forms of housing, and into job training. And I think the program, the safe parking program, as it's been established over the last few years, have really been proven effective, very much so. Is it perfect? No. And I think, frankly, the imperfections of the program to date has been through just the lack, really, on the city's part, of contract management issues. And if we're going to ask anyone, whether it's New Beginnings or anyone else, to really put on a lot of time and effort in monitoring lots and talking to people, we need to back that up with some funding, if that's the expectations, that, you know, that rules need to be met. We can't expect some program to do something on their own, expect also to find a way to fund it, if it's our policies, if it's part of our own policies. So I appreciate that this has been an evolutionary process, and like to see, to work on, to build on what's working, and to fix things that need improving. And I think we can do that today. The other piece I look at in this process, I think Nancy McCready's right on. I mean, having something that people can go to overnight, and then where do they go in the morning, is still an issue. And I don't have the answer to that issue, but this is one component of it, and I think she's on to something. It was tried before in the county in terms of a 24-hour site, and didn't go very far, although former supervisor Rose did try very hard and found some potential spots, but for one reason or another, didn't work out. So whether we move into that again, I think it behooves us to talk to the county again, if that's where we want to go. But at the end of the day, this program's talking about trying to get management to a program that's helping people move out of their recreation vehicles and into housing, trying to get them stabilized, get employment. A lot of people in this program are already working, they have kids, and it's a way for them to get a good night's sleep without being harassed or by outside folks, or worrying about getting a ticket, so that they can become able to function during the day. So that's the bigger philosophy here. In terms of the funding, I believe the idea was to bring that to Finance Committee as we're going through the budget process, which makes perfect sense to me, given our overall budget hearings. And I tend to agree with the Downtown Parking Committee's concern, that it's the access to the site that's really the value that the Downtown Parking Committee can bring to the city. To enforce the funding to come from that budget, I don't think is, I think, I agree with a lot of the concerns of a president that could set, so I do acknowledge that. Same goes with the waterfront department, if we go there. So that's, you know, so I understand that. Now, the level of funding, I think we're going to have to look at very carefully, of what exactly is it that we want monitored? You know, do you want someone there many, many hours a day, every single day? Is that really going to create a good program? Or is it trying to create a contract system that will address the major concerns and have people be able to be on-call? So whether it's 62,000, or 32,000, or whatever the number is, I think we still need to look at, what are we getting for those funds? And I don't know if we have the answers to that yet. And then finally, for the city, if we expect people in the M1 zone to participate in this program, the churches and nonprofit lots to participate in this program, and we're encouraging them to do so, we absolutely also need to be doing it ourselves. We can't just expect others to perform the job that we're not willing to do ourselves. So in terms of expansion, I think we, I totally support that. I agree that, let's bring it back in a year, and make it a year, and, you know, stay tuned to that deadline, and see how it's going. This program's come to the council a number of times in terms of tweaking it here and there, and that makes perfect sense, to see how it's working. So I support the staff recommendation of increasing the Correo commuter lot by three spaces, the Cota lot by three spaces on a one-year provisional basis, the garden cabrio, the pony lot by three spaces, and on a one-year provisional basis, and actually bring the whole program back for the year, not just those two particular new lots. So that's where I am here. I think it, you know, we're trying to solve a huge regional issue, and we have to play our part as well, and I think this is one way we can do that.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
I think Nancy was referring to a quote by Hubert Humphrey, that a society should be judged and measured by how it treats its most vulnerable, including those living in poverty. And I am a strong supporter of this, not only because of the lawsuit, but because I think compassion is a moral imperative, though I also think that accountability is a practical one. And that's why we should bring the whole thing back in a year. I agree with the recommendation of those representatives of the Downtown Parking Committee, that we shouldn't have any part of it just sort of hanging out there as a given. When we're bringing some of the lots back, in a year's time, we should bring them all back. I also feel that the generator thing is tricky. It's a lot of noise, it's pollution. I'd actually rather have people hook up to city power than permit generators, just as a sustainability value. And so I'm going to support the staff recommendation, and I think that we're on the right track. I also think that to not support it would be not conducting ourselves in good faith in the negotiations that we've had to settle this lawsuit.
Well, I'm going to throw two things out there, and the other council members can chime in. One thing is, the proposals for increased spaces in the Correo commuter lot and in the Cota commuter lot, to try out some spaces. The visitor's center lot is different. And why is it different? Because you can stay there all day. You can't in either of the commuter lots. And so we are giving, if you want to approve the visitor's center, the pony ride lot is what I call it, then you're saying that three spaces, they can stay there all the time. And I'm just not sure we're ready to go there. I have, so I wanted to point that out, because that's very different. And the Harbor Commission- I have, so I wanted to point that out because that's very different, and the Harbor Commission did not like it, so, but, and we also voted not to have any down at the waterfront, any RV parking overnight. So we would be giving three spaces where we said no to other RV parking. Mr. Wile?
Madam Mayor, I was just, in response to your point about the ability to stay in the visitor lot all day, that is a concern, and you're right. We neglected to mention that part of the regulations and part of the agreement in the enforcement of this with respect to that lot was that we would preclude any permit to anyone with an RV that was allowed there overnight under this program. We'd preclude them from having an annual waterfront permit.
Oh, okay. That's the difference.
So that would make that then just a regular hourly lot, and presumably they, you know, wouldn't want to stay there and pay the hourly rates.
Right, right. Yeah, or the day rate, whatever the whole day is. And the other thing that I want to point out is we have some terrific programs around here for people on low income. I mean, I don't think any other city can match it, so to say that we don't is not true. The four thousand housing units that we have for low-income people is amazing, and I had somebody in my, in my office a few months ago who said he is moving to town, he couldn't see how he could afford it, he wanted to go to school, and he said he's going to have to buy an RV, and I suggested he go over to the Housing Authority. And I, believe it or not, he's already in a room. I don't know how that happened so quickly, but it was really wonderful. So if you're not on the list, it's a very long list. If you're on the list, it gets shorter and shorter, which is kind of cool. And people do get into housing, and I'm glad that there have been forty-five people who have gotten into housing through this program. But I'm going to suggest that as part of this program, the purpose is to get housing, from what I can see. And people who are in this program should either be signed on with Transition House if they allow them, with families, or Housing Authority or both, because I don't see any of, otherwise you don't have, there's no purpose. You just come for a weekend and then leave. You're opening yourselves up to a lot. Churches and nonprofits and the M1 are okay because people are there, so it's a little bit different than the city lots. The churches kind of take care of those that are there, and same with the nonprofits. So just going to throw those problems out there, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether to vote for this or not, so that's where I am. Mr. Horton?
I agree with Mr. Rose, I think it was, on the provisional nature of all this. I think the year for everything is fine with me. I think the, the impact of parking in the neighborhoods is pretty difficult for some neighborhoods because of the awkward nature of the streets, and I'm not sure, it seems to me it's better to have someone in a parking lot than in front of a house as a general rule. I think the transition aspect of this is the most appealing thing for me, not only the transition to housing, but the possibility of learning skills, which is something the mayor alluded to, and moving on to a job which they may not have been trained for previously, but there's plenty of need for jobs, so that really appeals to me. So I think the funding issues that have been raised by the folks from Downtown Parking are very legitimate, and I'm expecting that this will come to Finance Committee where we'll have a chance to take a closer look at the financing aspects of it. But I tend to agree with the Downtown Parking people and also the Harbor Commission that those are not areas that are really designed to support this kind of a program. So I'm generally supportive of this idea.
Okay. Ms. Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for bringing up the issues that you did because I share them. And I don't think that the Pony Ride Lot, given all of the aspects and what we said about the waterfront, I do think that that's a classic mixed message that we send if we open up that lot. As the mayor pointed out, it's got different characterizations than the other ones. And the Carrillo Lot, I'm a little concerned about maximizing that one at this point in that there have been complaints. Now, New Beginnings is doing their best to address these complaints and hopefully they're resolved, but I think the oversight of all of this needs to be stepped up. So I'm in favor of the funding. I'm not in favor of taking it from the Downtown Parking, but I'm in favor of the funding wholeheartedly because we are asking you to do some very specific monitoring and some very specific oversight and case management and so forth, and you shouldn't have to do that on an unfunded mandate. So we should, we should help you fund that. So I'm in favor of that, just not from that source, but I'm sure Finance Committee can figure it out. The Cota Lot, I understand, is controversial in that it is used so much in the evening as a proximate spot for folks using the downtown, just like this one is, and that's the argument that I've heard for why this lot shouldn't be, the City Hall Lot shouldn't be used. But as a, as an original supporter of this program back when it first came about, I'm willing to go forward and increase the spaces on a provisional basis in the year, bring them back, but not with the Pony Lot, the two lots we can look at and we can see how that goes, the Cota Lot and the Carrillo Lot, and help New Beginnings fund it, especially since now we've opened up the M1 and the CM zones, that hopefully a number of people will step up and allow for a private arrangement between someone who lives in an RV to be able to stay on a piece of property. Because I know that's worked in the past, and I know that it's working now, and so we have legalized it, and hopefully it will increase. The churches and the nonprofits, I've always felt, I'm grateful for the ones who have stepped up, and I understand that there are a number throughout the South Coast now, but I really wish that that population, that those properties would open up even more because we've never had any complaints. I take that back. We had one complaint one time in the very beginning, and that was quickly resolved, and I've never heard boo from any of them since. So I know that works. So I'm willing to go forward on a provisional basis. I've always thought that it might just be easier to increase, and I understand the lawsuit in going forward in good faith and settling those provisions, and I do want to get that resolved and put to bed, so I don't want to monkey with it too much. But I thought that it would be more efficient really to spread the opportunity throughout the existing facilities that are already in the program, which would add an additional ten spaces if everybody stepped up and did that. We increased the five to a six throughout the program. But I understand that takes a cooperative understanding between some of the private property folks who are involved in the program and so forth. So the Carrillo Lot and the Cota Lot, we can go forward as planned, as suggested, and as far as I'm concerned, on a provisional basis, but I think that the Pony Lot has different considerations. I agree with Madam Mayor, and so I don't, I'm not comfortable with that, with that one. I think that there may be, there may be others in the city that we can, that we can look at, but that's where I am at this moment, so thanks.
Okay, Mr. Burnwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't support the Pony Lot. I do support the idea that it be provisional for a year. I don't support the idea that the money for it needs to come from the Downtown Parking Fund. I do support Madam Mayor's idea that anyone involved in these, these facilities on the city property be part of some kind of program, getting them into housing. I don't think that we should just be a stopoff point for someone on their way to someplace else to provide them with a spot to park. The one justification for all of this for me is that these are our citizens, these are our people, not necessarily somebody else's people, although we are always our brother's keeper, but if we are our brother's keeper, certainly it is ours and our own community first before it's someone else's. The management component is tricky. It's not, I don't know if I'd agree it's an unfunded mandate, but it is certainly, it is certainly something that New Beginnings has, when I'm very glad they have, shouldered as a management responsibility. And when it gets to the Finance Committee, I will be interested to see how the Finance Committee wrestles with that idea of where the money comes from. Does it all come from the city? Is there a partnership with New Beginnings to do some more fundraising? I don't know exactly what that would be. I like the program up to now. I think it does good things. I don't want to stop the program, but I also don't want to expand it too much until we're doing the right thing. I think Ms. Falcone's correct. Having it in the M1 and the CM zones right now is a little bit of an unknown. That may be quite a good thing. So those are my thoughts on it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
Well, on the consideration of programmatic considerations, as Mr. Linker has passed out in the handout, there are already extensive programmatic requirements for the program. In fact, it's turned away some people, those programmatic requirements, and the, it's hard for me to envision someone who wants to come here for the weekend to go through an application process and then acceptance and meet with representatives of New Beginnings and go over program rules. So I think that's a, that's a little bit of a red herring. We have a program requirements, and they are attempting to get people into permanent housing and permanent job placement. You know, this population is a mix of the desperate and the independent. There are some free spirits that do it as a lifestyle, but also a lot of people who are forced into it, and I think especially families and those that are struggling, it's not exactly a choice, it's a necessity. And I do have one suggestion about the Cabrillo Garden Lot. If we have some considerations of this being a different kind of milieu down there by the park and playground and even though staff has figured out a good way to determine that they're not there all day, we could designate it as a family-only spot, so only someone in the program with children being eligible for that spot. And I think that would be an appropriate way to, you know, deal with some of the concerns, but also enable us to have some additional spots open, because if Mr. Linker is being accurate about the demand and need, then we have multiple folks who are right now probably parking illegally somewhere in the city that want to come into the program that we just don't have spots for. So I'm going to move staff recommendation with the amendment of the Carrillo commuter lot being on a one-year provisional basis along with everything else, and that the Garden Cabrillo visitor lot be designated only for a family with children.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor. Okay, Mr. House, yeah, has not, and then I'll get to Mr. Wiley, although I...
Okay. All right. Yes, just a couple of things to comment. I do support the motion. I think that we, I think we all agree and understand that people are going to be living in RVs no matter what we do. In other words, it's part of what happens in the world as people are living in motor vehicles, and if they're in our city, it seems to me that it's the best thing that we can do to manage that to the best degree possible and to assist with monitoring assistance in achieving permanent housing, which I think this is what we're attempting to do here. I just wanted to voice my longstanding support for the city to work with the county towards a twenty-four hour motor housing park kind of arrangement. I think there's some tremendous benefits to that, and I, this is not what we're dealing with today, but I just want to kind of stand the record for that. It's something I think could have really good long-term benefits, and I'm not sure where, but we've got to keep working on it. I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Rose's comment about the expectation of good behavior, and I think I'd say it differently, I think of being a good neighbor, because when people are living in a neighborhood or near others, just like all of us do, we need to be really mindful of our relationship with them, and so for that, the people who are living in the RVs, that we really hope that they be good neighbors while they're there. One of the things that I appreciated was Dr. Linker's response to my question a little bit earlier about the funding, because when he described the current situation in terms of monitoring versus what could be done with the additional funding, I think the, what could be done addressed, could very well address many of the concerns and issues that we've had emailed to us and sent to us by letter and by phone calls and such. And I think that we really need at some point to get to that level of monitoring and frequency and to be able to make sure this works out. That's the accountability piece. I think that these should be provisional, and that's why I agree with that part of this motion, that we have a review period. And then lastly, to address the issues that were raised, or next to lastly, to address the issues that were raised by the mayor, Madam Mayor, I see this as part of a continuum of care and support. We have a lot of other options, and this is just one piece of it, and the degree to which it ties in with these other options and these other places for people to move forward, I think that's critical. So I don't know, I think, I think if New Beginnings is doing its job and has the resources to do its job, we can really continue the success story, and I think it is a success story. So the last thing is about the Pony Lot. I honestly believe that this idea that those who would be there would not have the access to the permit for the day parking down in the waterfront area resolves that one key issue. Otherwise, I see it as an ideal location for middle-of-the-night parking, and the idea that it would be for families only even enhances its desirability, so that's why I support the motion.
Okay. My concern for the Pony Lot is just that there's not always, and maybe we can ask Mr. Brightler, or maybe Mr. Olson knows, there's not always a check on permits. I mean, sometimes you just go in there and you stay whenever you want to. I mean, it's not, there's not always somebody at the kiosk, especially through the winter months. I just, my, I want to be perfectly clear, I have a great deal of respect for our housing, for what we do, and for our low-income housing is unbelievable. We have more than, I'd say, any other city that I know, fourteen percent or something like that of our housing. And I agree, this is kind of a part of the continuum, but to me, it's below because it's really substandard compared to even our low-income housing, and that's why I'm kind of reluctant. There's fifty-five RV spaces right now we're allowing. We're going to add some more now. Do we have an idea of what percentage we want to be RV spaces? I mean, I don't know that there's a, I mean, this might go along really well, then next you're going to add ten more, or, I mean, what is the program here? What is the overall plan? We haven't talked about it, and we really do need to talk about it. I think the connection with our Housing Authority or with Transition House or whatever kind of program you said is essential, I don't see it here. I mentioned it, but I didn't see it. And I think it's really important, because people can get into housing, and I think that's what people want. I finally figured it out after so many years up here. I finally figured out that that's what cities can do. Most cities don't allow this kind of RV parking at all, and I think it's a mistake to have. Right now, we're talking about fifty-five RVs out there, and it's okay with me in nonprofits and churches, as I said, provisional in the first two lots is okay, but the Pony Lot is difficult for me. So, because I think people, and, you know, rightly so, these people will be, ended up hanging out there all day, but you talk to the visitor's center and see if that's what they want, and see if there's behavior standards for them so that the visitor's center can give a call, not to the mayor, but to Mr. Linker, Dr. Linker, and that's the way it should be, not, you know, so it should be, I want a closure on this sort of thing. It should be a program that has a beginning and end and is part of our overall housing program, and maybe it's for the Housing Subcommittee to take up, but certainly we just haven't had that discussion, and that makes me very, very nervous.
Madam Mayor?
Who said Madam Mayor? Yes, Mr. Allen?
Currently in the program that we have, I'm agreeing with New Beginnings, all the RVs must exit the Carrillo Lot by six o'clock in the morning, and they cannot remain in the Lot, and we would extend that same requirement to the other lots that we add to this program. The Cota Lot will have a five-thirty AM... The Cota Lot will have a 5:30 a.m. requirement because of the farmer's market on a Saturday morning. We decided to make it 5:30 seven days a week versus having a different day for Saturday mornings just for confusion purposes. Yeah, so, if there's an RV in there after 6:00 a.m., regardless of what lot it is, they're in violation of the program, we would expect New Beginnings to address it, and if there's a second violation, they would be relocated to a different lot. So, just to make sure that's understood by the council.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Wiley.
If there's a council consensus that this be done on a provisional basis, I would suggest that we revise the resolution, and I have some suggested language. This would be a new Section 4, and then the existing Section 4 would just get renumbered as 5. The suggested language is the designation of city parking lots as part of the RV Accommodation Program, and the criteria established for the supervision of that program by the city designated nonprofit, "Established in this resolution shall be reviewed and reconsidered by the City Council within one year of the adoption of this ordinance." That makes, I mean, I think we would...
That's within the spirit of my motion.
And have better record of that decision if we did it that way.
Okay, he's got it written out for you, Brenda, if you can, if you need it, okay? And a question about limiting the Cota, I mean, Pony Lot to families?
Madam Mayor, a concern I have with that is the definition of a family.
Yep.
And as long as we're all on the same page there, that is, if you're a family, if you say you are. So, and that's actually a California Supreme Court case called Adamson versus the City of Santa Barbara.
Which we had, yes.
Yeah, we know that well. We could just define that there is at least one minor.
Okay. That would work, I think.
And, Madam Mayor, there, I mean, it's spelled out in the handout, transition to permanent housing, job preparation and placement. I think that we should continue to stress that, but I don't think that when New Beginnings has gone to great pains of explaining us that that is part of the program, that we should not let that hold up this effort. And I agree that living in vehicle is not the most ideal from a lot of perspectives. I've done it myself at Leadbetter Beach. It's Brian Barnwell's favorite story of mine, but it was not by choice, it was by necessity. And the transition to permanent housing is the ideal, but there is far more housing that is even more substandard in the city than living in an RV. I just passed by in, by train this morning.
Are you cheering for the housing that's worse than?
Along the train tracks, I spotted at least 10 tents, just tents hanging out there, you know? People living right next to the trains because that's the one place they can find, and I think this is vastly preferable to those other options.
Madam Mayor?
Mr., oh, yes, Mr. Olson and Mr. Barnwell.
If I might add, on the transitional nature of our approach here with the Safe Parking Program, that's actually in the ordinance.
Right.
There's specific language that, while calling for, or allowing for overnight parking on, either in the CM or the M1, or at churches and nonprofits or city lots, all of those zoning ordinance provisions make it clear that we're talking about participation in a program that is intended to be a transitional situation. So, it's, we're definitely going to be making that part of our effort as we move forward.
Okay, good. Thank you. Ms. Barnwell.
Actually, that's something I want to get cleared up. Mr. Williams referred to somebody being able to come in and spend a weekend and then move on. Is that, what is possible now? Is that possible, or do you sign up for a program, or how are we addressing the need?
Dr. Linker can explain it to you.
Yeah, anybody who comes into the program has to show us that indeed they have been living in the area. This is not a weekend kind of program by any means. Someone comes in, typically, we interview them, we find out what their situation is, where they work, do they have tags, do they have insurance, do they have current license, where they currently living? We do a whole assessment and summary of where they are and what their needs are, and then we determine, are they appropriate for the program? So, someone passing through for the weekend would not qualify for this program.
Good, okay. I just want to be sure we got that cleared up. I'm still having trouble with the Pony Lot part. I guess the thing that saves it for me is we're going to come back in a year. But that's the only thing that's saving it for me, and I like the idea that it's a family-oriented thing. But maybe, Mr. Allen, you can answer this question for me. If I park overnight in a parking lot, and, let's just say, I sleep in the back of my car in the Granada Garage Lot, and I get up in the morning about 10 or 11, and I go have a cup of coffee, goof around till about noon, then I decide to leave, and I go to the kiosk, and I say, you know what, I haven't got any money. So, the kiosk person says, okay, well, we're going to write you down here, and we're going to make you pay. That's the way it works, right? You don't have to have any money. So, conceivably, you could do something like that down at the Pony Lot under this program. Am I right, or how are we going to address that?
Well, that's operated by Mr. Brightley. It's a different program. I'm not sure how they operate, but they're currently in the downtown parking programs. If you go to exit and you don't have any money, we would give them an envelope, tell them how much they owe, and they have to mail it back to the downtown parking offices. If they fail to do it, eventually, we would give over the finance, and they would handle it through collections.
Is this a hypothetical situation, or a camel and boot?
No, it's real. It's real. I've actually been in Lot 10 and gotten out in the morning, and I didn't have the money, and, you know, I put, you know, 24 hours later, I write a check, put it in the envelope, send it off, but I'm just, so, if we implement this, if, when we implement this, I'd like to kind of stay on top of that component part of it, and I'm sure Mr. Linker would say, well, that's an abuse of the program, so, guess what? You don't get to do this anymore if that's the way you're handling the Pony Lot, because there is that component. The other lots don't have that. The commuter lot doesn't have that kind of after, early-morning, you know, kiosk guy, nor does that happen at the Cota Street Lot either. So, I just bring it up. Yes, Mr. Linker?
Piece of clarification. I think the intention in the budgeting is that there's going to be staff available. They're going to go to all the lots at 6:00 in the morning. Everybody has to be out. So, if somebody, you know, can't just sit there, they're going to be escorted out.
Okay.
And if they make their way back in, and they're illegal, that jeopardizes their participation in the program.
Okay, good. Okay, well, under those circumstances and recognizing it's a year, I think I can support the motion. I appreciate the family part of it also. I think that's a good thing to add into it, and we'll come back in here and see how it's working. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Mr. Barnwell in that if we give this a shot, and if it is for people with minor children, then that does a little something different. I can go there. I can go there on a provisional basis for that. There are two outstanding questions, though, and I think that part of what has made this okay, and what will make it okay in the future, is the true oversight of this program. And that means that the rules need to be followed, and, you know, it's not zero tolerance, everybody makes mistakes, that's fine, but, as Mr. Rose said, but there's a lot of sort of wink and a nod, maybe, that maybe got us into trouble along the way here. And I know that it's very hard, and, you know, it's very difficult sometimes to be the authority, but without that, this program can fail by an overuse of compassion. I mean, that's a very strange thing to say, I understand, but one needs to have these rules, and people need to follow them, and then it really does work. It's a great program, and that's why we're thinking of expanding it, and we have expanded it all these years. It's grown, it's grown, it's grown, it's grown. But it has to, it has to be managed, not for everybody, I mean, but there are, and, you know, Nancy and Lynda are the first ones to say that, you know, it only takes one or two bad apples to, you know, make it a mess for everybody, and we just don't want that to happen. So, I can't stress enough how critical, really, you know, the oversight component of this is. And so, with that and the fact that it would be restricted to minors, now, what happens when, you know, the 18-year-old doesn't leave the house? I don't know, but, you know, I know, Lynda's back there going, I got one of those. But...
You're not eligible in...
As far as the, as far as the RV park is concerned, I know that five years ago, we all, Madam Mayor, looked, we all looked really, really hard, and Susan Rose looked really, really hard, and we thought we had it a couple of times, but it fell, it fell through. But we need to keep looking, and you're right, Nancy, you're absolutely right, but it's, gosh, it's really very difficult. So, with that, I will go ahead and support the motion, but I really can't stress enough how critical the programmatic piece of this is, because I do share some concerns about that, so we'll just...
Well, I couldn't agree more with the programmatic part. And the $62,000, I think that they're requesting, I know that's not in this, but it needs, that has to be there. And if we can't find the $62,000, which I think we will, but if we can't, then this can't go on like this, because we'll just be getting so many complaints, it's unbelievable, because we have gotten some complaints. Ms. Falcone?
I'm sorry. There are two outstanding issues here that we haven't mentioned, and Mr. Barnwell touched on one of them very briefly. One is, what is our policy? What is our rule about weekends? Because in the commuter lots, with the exception of the Cota Lot on Saturday, which is where the farmer's market is, it's, there's nothing going on there. So, do we allow for folks to stay there all day on the weekends, or not? We haven't really grappled with that, and I know that there's been some misunderstandings, so I think we need to wrestle that one to the ground. And the point that Madam Mayor brought up about what is our carrying capacity? Now, the 55 spaces I recognize are from IV to carpentaria. They're not all concentrated in the city, but there is a carrying capacity in the city. I don't plan to speak for any other jurisdiction, but we need to sort of wrestle that one to the ground, too, because this program, it has a history of growing, which is a good thing, and I don't think it's finished yet, but we do need to have that conversation, and we haven't yet. Madam Mayor's right.
Mr. Allen, did you have something?
On the Creo commuter lot, we recently posted that we're no RVs during the daytime hours. We haven't had a problem in the Cota Lot. That's something we definitely will take a look at, if there is a problem with RVs hanging out and, you know, that's...
Well, I'm not saying one way or another. I'm just saying that we haven't really, you know, enunciated it clearly, I don't think.
Has not been a problem in the Cota Lot. You know, we addressed it in the Creo Lot because there was a problem. You know, so if it becomes a problem, we'll definitely post it. The policy is you're not supposed to be parking there all day long, and not being, it's purpose to be parking, and to retrieving your vehicle, not to be hanging out all day long.
I guess my question is, why? I mean, it's the weekend, nobody's there, why do we care?
Yeah, I agree with you. Just because people sign up for this program doesn't mean we should give them a lower set of rights than the citizens of the city as a whole. If everybody can park there on weekends, and anybody can set up their lawn chair and have a little, you know, football party or something like that, then why shouldn't people who live there?
And now that, okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Just a question, you mentioned the $64,000 question, which is actually a $64,000 in the memo.
62, it's...
Well, I had 64 from the Downtown Parking Committee. But the actual number and what exactly it's going to be in the questions you just raised, I think is part of what I was trying to say in terms of the contract management, of what exactly is it that we need to have happen in order to have a program that works? And we don't have those details yet, and whether it's worth, whether the dollar value is 60-something thousand, or 30-something thousand, or somewhere in between, as long as the outcomes is where we want to be in terms of compliance, I think that's the direction. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, Finance Committee comes back and says, we think we have a solution for contract management that only costs $40,000, you know, and the councils, I don't want the council to feel like, well, does it have all these bells and whistles that, is that really, you know, fitting what it is that we need? And I think, so as long as the outcome is where we all want to be, as we talked about here today, I think that's the concern. I just, I was just hearing, you know, we're going to, we're going to fine $60-something thousand dollars out of the budget, and I don't know if we had that number really specified out yet. I thought that was part of what the Finance Committee needed to do.
That's the only number I've heard, but...
Yeah, Mayor Bloom and members of the council, that's the reason we didn't bring, we don't believe that we have had sufficient time to negotiate with New Beginnings on what's appropriate. And quite honestly, I think we were trying to respond to a single individual who was complaining, and we need to have, what's an appropriate level of monitoring, not just in the short term, but also in the long term. And also, we have other city employees who go to these lots, some of them on a regular basis, and some not so regular basis, and we wanted to look at that as well. And that's why the way we presented this to you is, it gives us 90 days to wrap up our negotiations with New Beginnings, and go through the finance process, and come back to you with an approved agreement that'll lay out what the monitoring will be and how, and the recommended funding.
Okay. And that sounds good to me, and I will support this having to do with provisional till next March, I think we said, we'll start looking at it. Because I've always been very interested in with Casa Esperanza and everything on the original board, but I do have a lot of questions, and it doesn't seem to me that we have addressed them very well. The one that's going to be the most difficult one is the Pony Lot down there, and that has to do with, there's nobody in that kiosk an awful lot of the time, and I think the Harbor Commission is right on with that. So, we'll be driving by, and we'll be studying it, and by next March, we'll say, hey, that doesn't work, or that, hey, that does work. So, I'll support it, but only because it's for a provisional time, but I think people that, who are down on their luck, or people who have had a very hard time, need some support, and I've always believed that, but they also need to get themselves signed up for this counseling, get into permanent housing, that's what it leads to. It's not just there to put out your lawn chair. Okay? We have a motion and a second, and it has to do with, don't forget, the Pony Lot, just for those with minor children. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. We're going to take a couple minutes, and then we'll be up here with the budget, so let's get them set up, for the financial plan, I mean.
And we are on item number 16. Will you please read it, Madam Clerk?
Item number 16, proposed two-year financial plan for fiscal years 2008 and 2009, and recommended operating a capital budget for fiscal year 2008.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Samario.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council. My name is Bob Samario. I'm the Assistant Finance Director, and it is with a lot of pleasure, on behalf of the City Administrator, to submit to you the proposed two-year financial plan and recommended budget for 2008. All of you should have in front of you a copy of the proposed plan document, and you can see, it's a beautiful-looking document. We're not looking to win any beauty contests, but it is beautiful, and inside is equally as pretty. I want to give recognition to Damien Godal for the cover. He's actually a pretty well-established photographer, and so he took his photo and used that for the cover, and that came out really nice. This is an important milestone for us as staff. You know, this is a process that began back in September, or October, for the City Administrator's Office and Finance Department, and for the rest of the city back in December, and so this is a significant achievement for us. There is a lot of work left to be done as we move into the public review phase and adoption in June, but we're nonetheless pleased to have gotten to this point. We are primarily going to be talking process today. We're not going to look at any numbers. Well, we've decided that it makes more sense in terms of time and the fact that we have our very first budget session next Monday, to wait to get into the numbers then. The only financial comment I'll make is that I wanted to report, and pleased to report, that we do have a proposed balanced general fund budget for the next two years, so it looks good, and that includes funding our capital with existing, with operating revenues. So, that's really good news for us. And just in terms of the recommended budget filing, it is pursuant to City Charter that we file the budget. The City Administrator is required to submit a budget to council six days prior to the effective date of the budget, which is July 1, so it's technically required May 1. As you know, we always submitted... is July one, so it's technically required May one. As you know, we always submitted a little earlier. Uh, this time we're a week earlier than required, and that's to give both the City Council and the community more time to review it in detail. And just to avoid any confusion, we, it is a two-year financial plan that's before you, but we only adopt a one-year budget. So the, the focus of the discussion during the public review phase will be on the first year, fiscal year two thousand eight, uh, with some, perhaps some discussion on two thousand nine, but really, we're looking at two thousand eight, which will be adopted at the end of June. And last week, council established five public hearing dates for the, for public hearings and budget work, and for the budget review. And you could see the five dates noted. Uh, the first one is next Monday, Monday, April thirty, six to ten P.M. And you could see that there are five ending on Thursday, June seventh. And the times have been sort of spread out throughout the day to provide more opportunity for the public to attend the meetings and provide us feedback. Um, uh, these special meetings are dedicated to budget review. You, you recall, a few years ago, we decided that it'd be best to kind of set out separate, special, separate meetings for council, just to focus on the review, review the budget, and we believe they've been very successful. Throughout these meetings, each of the departments will be presenting their budget. There are actually twelve departments, but we're also gonna present the mayor and council's recommended budget. And again, the city, the city residents are encouraged to participate. In addition to the, to the City Council review, we also have the Finance Committee looking at the budget. Uh, theirs is a little bit different. They have a more focused review on certain elements of the budget, so it's not really be done inter-duplicative. Um, and, um, we have five days scheduled for their review. At this point, we have tentatively scheduled them to begin at twelve P.M. on the Tuesdays beginning today. We actually went over some topics today, but then each of the next Tuesdays through May twenty-second. Um, some of these may in fact start earlier. Uh, depends on what, what, what else may be added, or how long the discussion takes to cover the topics. Uh, attached to the general report are the schedule of topics, um, as well as the times and dates for their review. And, and just like with the City Council meetings, we do encourage the public to come in and participate in those reviews as well. And so where to obtain a copy of the two-year financial plan, uh, City Clerk's office has, has copies available for review here in City Hall on the main floor. In the library, we have copies available for, for the public's review in the ma- main and east side branches. And we also have, in the city's website, on the link where it says "City Budget Info," um, the entire two-year financial plan document. And what's really neat about it is that you don't have to open up the entire document. You can just pick a section or schedule and click on that, and it'll open up just those pages that you're interested in, or you can look at the entire thing, but it is kind of nifty. And then we also have copies on CD, and in, in your, in your binders, if you turn them open, the first page, you'll see that there are CDs that we made with the, the cover matching that on the, on the document. Um, it's really, really nice. If you open it up, it's, it's got a, what I'm told, it's an etched label. It's very professional. And for those who would like to get a copy, they can come to the Finance Department here in City Hall, and we'd be happy to provide them one.
That's great.
And, and incidentally, on our website is the public hearing schedule as well. So what's next? Uh, as I mentioned, next Monday, April thirty, the first budget work session, public hearing, from six to ten P.M. We are gonna start with the budget overview, as, as I mentioned, in light of doing it here, instead of doing it here, we're gonna cover that at the first, um, budget work session. We'll look at the general fund primarily, some highlights, including the multi-year forecast. We'll look at citywide totals plus enterprise funds. And then we'll start with the departmental presentations, first with administrative departments. And then lastly, I just wanted to give a special thanks to a lot of people throughout the city. As you know, this is a pretty significant effort. A lot of people are involved, and, and as, as the City Administrator's Office has been trying to do, we, we push the responsibilities of the budget development and monitoring down to the program level or supervisors. So a lot of people are affected and impacted by this process. There are also budget staff at each of the departments who spend a lot of time coordinating their respective department's budget development. Uh, they work with the Finance Department real closely, and we really appreciate their hard work, and they've done a great job, as always. In the City Administrator's Office, Nina Johnson, Assistant to the City Administrator, is the one coordinating the P-three component of, of the budget document. As you know, we've added several years ago, P-threes are performance measurements to the budget. Jeff McKee, an environmental compliance officer from the airport, has actually been working temporarily here in the City Administrator's Office as an administrative analyst, and he's been helping Nina, um, working with departments and just providing direction and guidance on the P-three development. And then in terms of the Finance Department, um, Jill Tarr, Budget Manager, she's sitting to my right here. Um, she is the axle in the, or the grease in the axle. She's the icing on the cake. She makes this whole thing happen. She really is a quarterback for the entire development of the budget. Uh, she took over my job several years ago, which I, before she came on board, I used to do it, but she does it a lot better than I do, or I did. And so I really can't say enough about her. She's just done a great job. And then Catherine Simpson, right to her right, is our budget technician. She's actually an hourly employee. Uh, we found her at UCSB. She's still finishing her college, um, degree or studies. Uh, kid, because she's still so young, but she's incredibly bright, very, very talented, and she's been a, a big help since we lost Maureen Gosh, who are previous budget technicians. This past January, we were a little worried, but she went to work for the City of Goleta. So this, Catherine was a great find. And of course, everybody else in the Finance Department, Sidney O'Dell, Rudy Livingston, Lynn Sparks, and Jenny Hopwood were all instrumental in putting this document together. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we have questions? I think Jill, Jill would be, uh, should be a little bit upset at being called greasy, like, ice, what was that, greasy icing, or what was that? Something like that. But, yeah, but, but we appreciate all you've done with the whole team, because it, this is an amazing, uh, effort. Mr. Horton.
I would more categorize it as queen of the budget process. I think that's perhaps better.
Budget paving.
And, uh, this is one of the, um, most important and yet most unsung, uh, tasks of any in the city, because it's, it's a tremendous amount of highly detailed and technical work, and it's here, um, ahead of time. Um, I've been through several iterations of, of this book since I've been here, and it's been better every time. And I can't remember back to when you did it, but I know it's very good now. And, um, I just want to express this, as Chair of Finance, my, um, my personal appreciation for the fine work that's going into this. Uh, I, I've seen a lot of other cities, and I know this is, um, one of the very top, and we've received awards, awards almost every year for how good we do. And, uh, we do greatly appreciate what you've done and know that you've worked very hard in long hours. And, um, and here we are, and so thank you greatly for your work.
Thank you, and we look forward to the budget meetings where we can dig right in there. So thanks. Thank you very much. Okay, without any further questions, item number seventeen, please.
Item number seventeen, request for additional funds for Fire Station Two's solar demonstration project.
Okay. And then we're gonna go into a closed session after that and come back out for item nineteen. So item seventeen, Mr. Nisic. Oops.
As we get this booted up, good afternoon, the mayor and council. This item is, uh, kind of a two-pronged approach. Uh, first, I should probably introduce myself. I'm Tony Nisic, Public Works Director. Assistant to me will be, uh, Bill Ferguson, our, our water, um, uh, construction supervisor, who plays a, an important part in a lot of the, uh, sustainable stuff we're gonna talk about. But the item that's specifically on the, on the agenda we're gonna talk about is Fire Station Two, but I want to also use the opportunity to give you an update on some of the other, uh, sustainable projects, particularly a couple of solar projects and some of the other processes that are going on. If we can, uh, get out of the budget presentation and into the, uh...
Well, we just skipped over to item number nineteen. It's very hard to read, uh, solar. There.
We've got it right, fun. Right there, there we go.
There.
Oh, here we are.
There it is. Oh, that's pretty.
The technology doesn't work. And you probably have, this is the first of our experiment with these new standardized, uh, slides, so you can kind of, if you have any comments about, if you like it or don't like it, let us know. We'll, we're still playing with it, so this is a, a new standardized process for our slides. This is supposed to be the Public Works Department standard, so...
That's good.
Are one of the two that are up there, so we'll... Comments on how, how you like this approach or not? We'll, we, we wanna get it better, so we're, we're gonna experiment. So we're the guinea pig with this particular organization, which is why I'm here and everybody else is gone. Anyway, just moving through the process, um, the, the specific item we want action on is the, um, is the request to, to move additional twenty-nine, four-hundred thousand dollars from, uh, general fund reserves to this project budget, uh, because it's, it's been, let me see if I get my slide here. Let me get the mouse. Why don't you do the mouse and I'll do this. There we are. But I thought it'd be helpful to, to talk a little of the history. Way back in, in March of, May of 'oh five is when the council first approved this as part of a, uh, several items. This was also the one where we, the, the council took action and approved this as a demonstration project, but also on that agenda item, we talked about the solar guidelines and directed community development to work on solar guidelines and, and several other things. We also, uh, joined, uh, a community cooperative energy partnership, uh, which helped us with this, with this, uh, design. And, um, anyway, so we, we decided at that point, because of the partnership, we would move forward in two different types of, um, processes. One is to do the design and acquire the materials, which we did as part of the, uh, the, we call this the Cooperative Community Energy Project. They're a company that, that, that came to us with, from C E C locally, and they're a company that specializes in the design and acquisition of, uh, solar equipment at, at a discounted price. So we used them to help us design and come up with the spec- specifications appropriate for the location, and that was part of the problem. In, in June sixth, we actually then authorized the, the design specs and the materials with the Cooperative Green Energy Project, and then June twenty-ninth, we, we issued a purchase order with them to actually finish the design and the materials. But part of the problem here, and we took so much time, is it simply, as a new project, working with them, we took a standardized, uh, bit of equipment and tried to fit it to a semi-standard roofing system. And without getting into a whole lot of detail, it, that's where the time came from. If you can imagine, when we did on paper, where the holes were gonna line up in the panels and where the holes were gonna line up in the roof, uh, wasn't quite what we thought it would be. So there's a lot, a lot of time that went to figuring out how to put an inch hole and an inch, inch and a half inch, uh, beam that was underneath that roof. So it took a while. We finally got it, uh, moved on, and that's, anyway, that's where most of the extra time was in this particular, uh, application. We did, in fact, uh, after we acquired the materials and sat around, we did, went out and, and did a bid for the installation. Taft Electric was the sole bidder, but it was a good bid. The cost there, forty, forty-two nine, was twelve thousand, nine hundred over what our estimate was, which of course had been six months before. On April second of this year, they did in fact begin to install the system. And, uh, go back and go, and there it is. Uh, it's mostly installed there now. As you can get, get a flavor of what it looks like on top of the, uh, Fire Station Two. The next picture kind of shows it, and it's important to show you the, the angle. There, from Milpiss Street you're looking at, you can kind of see that, uh, underneath the canopy of the gas station there, you can kind of see a little bit of the overhang, uh, the backside of the panels, which are, which are visible from that angle. And then you can also see from the front, a little bit on the right-hand side there, the, the panel sticking up above the, the parapet there. Uh, part, part of the reason for this, uh, closing change order today is we're gonna, a little extra money, about eight thousand dollars, to, to put some screening around that, to screen it, so we'll be, we'll be in full compliance with our, um, solar energy guidelines that were recently adopted, between the time this project was approved and the time we actually got it installed. But we think with this little screening on top of there, it'll, it'll blend, and you won't see at all the, uh, the, the, from the side. This is looking across the sea, uh, from the shelter and then, uh, the other one you saw from Milpiss. So we feel real, real good that the, the project is, is installed, and the purpose of, again, the money is just to make up some of the additional cost of the installation, the, the material costs and, and the screening costs, which is a fairly small cost. And again, hopefully, next time, as we get better at these, we'll get better at, uh, figuring all this stuff out in advance, but there's a, a huge learning curve, and we think, we feel pretty good. I'm feeling pretty good. This, the bottom line is, we think this will provide sixty or so percent of the operating, uh, energy for the fire station. So we think that's a, that's a good thing, and we, and, and we think at a minimal of, uh, disruption, the fire station, people won't even know that it's there, and they'll just, they'll just save their energy bill. So I think it's, it's a great thing. So I'm really looking forward to it, and we hope that all the stuff we learned, uh, in terms of how to, how to install these things will, will service in the future as well.
Okay.
So that's the action we're asking formally on, on today's agenda to, to, for additional money for the cost of, the cost overruns of this project. But I want to take some time, if okay with the council, just kind of go quickly through some of the other entry products, projects that are moving forward to the system, this kind of little history, because I think it's kind of interesting when we talk about it. Uh, just an example of, of some of the projects in solar, uh, well, I'll talk briefly about some of the things we're doing. Gibraltar Dam and Hope Reservoir, where we've had solar installations for a couple of decades that have been, uh, very popular. And then a, a more recent one, the Library Bookmobile, and we'll talk about our, our, uh, project, Corp Yard. Just, just for kind of background, because some people don't even know this, up at Gibraltar Dam and also at Hope Reservoir, we have these two, uh, systems of solar arrays that are photovoltaic systems, and they've been there for over twenty years. And they're very important equipment, and we, our cameras, our communication equipment, so we use to communicate, communicate with our, our, uh, facilities here. Uh, our two-way radio equipment, which is obviously very important, they've worked very well with almost no, you know, through, through storms and, and all the, the issues and vandalism we've had over the years, we may be able to use these. So the point is, we, we've been doing it for years, but also, we've, we've entrusted them with some of our most sensitive, uh, operations, and they've worked very well. So again, you know, we think because of that, we have no fear about moving forward in a more, in a bigger way with some of our other equipment, because we, we, we expect our success will be as equally, you know, if not better, uh, with some of the other things. So these are small systems, but they've been around for a long time. The, uh, the Library Bookmobile was, was a first attempt to really do something that kind of hadn't been done before. We, we talked about it. Uh, again, you know, up in Santa Cruz, they'd done something like this, but then, you know, when you start following somebody else's system, you find out, well, they didn't do exactly this. They did something much smaller and much different, and they were doing kind of a little, a little small kind of RV kind of thing. And when we ended up with this fifty thousand dollar project on a full-size bus, it was much different than anything else I talked about. But again, our staff worked hard and, and, uh, put this together. The problem we were trying to address, the real-life problem, was when they parked the Bookmobile, and you had to run the generator to power the computers and air conditioning and lights. It made a lot of noise. It also, you know, produced a lot of diesel fumes that made it kind of uncomfortable. They had to close the windows. If they didn't have to close the windows, then it could get natural air conditioning and all those kinds of problems. This was designed to solve all those problems, and in the meantime, it also helps to save energy and, and takes us more toward a sustainable solution. So we're kind of happy about that. But the issue was, again, it doesn't power the bus, but it powers when the bus is sitting there and it's operation, and allows a much more pleasant environment for all the users. And that's, and so was the solution, and it was met, and we're really happy about that. It took a lot of our staff time, finding somebody who can install the system. Uh, we said, we heard people had done this before, and there are places, you've probably seen some of these RVs along the road with little solar arrays on them. Well, it was nothing like this. You can't see very well in this picture, but you, the whole bus roof is covered with solar panels. And this type of installation, we had to actually design the, the attachment to the roof. We had to figure out how to program the computer a little differently than, than the other places had done. And the installation was done at a big RV place down in, in Irvine, uh, where we could find somebody who could do this. But they hadn't quite done anything this big before either. So again, a success story using our existing staff and some outside expertise. Uh, I think from what I hear, that, that people like it a lot, and a real-life problem and a real-life solution, and then we've moved forward, and this is a, a success story. One of the big projects that we're working on now is something that Bill's really involved in. This is our city corp yard, uh, complex. And what we're trying to show you here in that picture is, the dark areas there are where we're proposing to put solar arrays, a photovoltaic system, for the whole corp yard. You recognize Guard Street at the bottom of the picture there, where the, the, uh, the red roof building is, the Public Works, Community Development Administration. The rest of the area, all the way over from Garden through Laguna Street, is the corp yard, where we have Parks and Recreation, Motor Pool, and General Services, et cetera. What we've designed here is a system that pretty much takes every southwest and, and southeast-facing roof and puts a, a maximum amount of solar panels we can on there. And so that, this is, gives you an idea how big the project is and, and where we're going with it. Again, one we've been working on for a while. We, uh, a couple things happened. This project got, again, started a little slowly. We had a, a vendor who was gonna help us do it locally, and, long story short, is that kind of didn't work out so well. So we, about the same time as that began to not work out, the League of California Cities and the California Supervisor Association also has a joint purchasing, uh, program. It's been around for years, and we've used them for other things. Well, they saw, I think, uh, the need here, and they also went out and established a, what they're calling their "Go Solar" program, with the intent was specifically to help communities go solar. And they needed to get not only, uh, qualified installers, but, but some technical advice and also some financing, and, uh, people who could, who could deal with the credits, the, the way the, uh, the laws offer credits and rebates are. Anyway, they developed a system. So instead of us going out with our own request or proposal and doing that, we said, "We'll just, we'll just use a, this, uh, cooperative purchasing agreement with the league and, and the County Supervisor Association." And we did that. We, uh, we requested a formal proposal from this company, which is due this week, uh, Friday, so hopefully we'll, we'll have that this week, and, and hopefully it'll be, it'll be a good one, so we'll be able to recommend approval to you. But, uh, again, this is a three to four hundred kilowatt, uh, solar power, providing approximately sixty to sixty-five percent of, of the, the power for that, for that complex, which is a big user of energy. So we, we feel pretty excited about that. This is a, a substantial project. You've got an idea, it's about sixty, sixty-five percent of, of that complex, about two percent of total energy usage in the city. So when we talk about moving towards sustainable power, green power, this is certainly a big step in that direction. We also, as part of it, were able to, early on, um, uh, lock down under an older... We also, as part of it, were able to, early on, lockdown under an older program, a million-dollar rebate rebate that we are holding on to, that if we're successful with this, we'll be able to do that, as well as with this proposal, be able to get substantial tax credits and, and some accelerated depreciation which goes with this, which is why we do this as a, as a public-private partnership and not just a public project. Because we did it as a public project, we would not be eligible for those accelerated depreciation nor the, nor the tax credits. So again, it's exciting, it's due this week, so we can hardly wait to see that, because we're really feeling good about it. They've been out several times to look at the, the project and to get familiar with it. Assuming that goes real well, and we're able to do our review, and we have no surprises, we hope to be back in front of the council in June or July to recommend that we move forward with this project. Again, it's a little more complicated, because it's not just a physical construction we're moving forward with. We'll be back with you with something called a, a power purchase agreement, which will be complex and legal and stuff, but basically it's a way to buy the system so that we're able to, to move forward and as well as take credit for all those credits, rebates, and accelerated appreciation. So other energy products, I think it's, just kind of want to mention briefly, first one up is, is energy audits. One of the other things we did is we, as part of the Edison and some of the other communities, we joined with the Energy Partnership Program. That Energy Partnership Program, one of the things that it provides is, they provide audits for their members at the cost, Edison's cost. So we took advantage of those, we immediately requested audits for most of our major facilities, and came back with a thick report that had a list of recommended improvements. Now, this is about the second or third time we've done these kind of audits, and each time we've done some improvements, so this time around, it was a little harder to find very, you know, the cost-effective or the so-called low-hanging fruit, but we did find some. And I, I think we found about three hundred and so thousand dollars worth of recommendations in those, in that report that we're now kind of sorting out, and there is some money in the budget, I think we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for the first phase of implementation, but we'll be looking at that, and certainly when we look a little deeper at it, it looks like it makes a lot more sense to, to maybe put some more money in there, we'll, we'll put that together and come back before it. But right now, we're, we're feeling pretty good about that, but as part of a program, we wanted to get going, but, and again, we're looking at heating, ventilating, air conditioning costs, where we can either avoid some costs or reduce some, some costs or use some smart controllers, so. And we feel, we feel good that's part of our system, and again, it's in, there is some money in the budget to do it, to respond to these audits this year. The next thing we want to look at is, we have kind of minor and major capital projects ongoing. One of the things that keeps asked, people ask about, you know, part of our sustainability project, which we're putting together, is what are we doing on a regular basis? Well, we're doing a lot. One of the things, under the council direction, we've modified slightly, is to, is to look more broadly at what, what projects to come before us in our just normal, everyday maintenance period, what can we do to improve either energy conservation or reduce water demand? Again, just briefly looking at what we're doing here, solar projects, we're looking now, pretty much, if we're going to do a roofing project, we're going to look to see if there's any solar application, not only in terms of photovoltaic systems, which take a lot more space, but also just replacement of water heating systems, there are some very good technology for hot water heaters, and we think that, you know, they don't take a lot of space, and when it makes sense, we're going to be recommending those as well. We talked about lighting systems, which are primarily controls and new electronic ballast, where we're trying to get more of the energy from the electricity to the light without a lot of heat and, and waste, and we think we're, we're doing pretty well with that. Our HVAC systems for heating, ventilating, and air conditioning, where we could have more controls, use more outside air, reduce, you know, having to heat, or heat or cool the air, and then heat or cool it after we heat or cool it a second time, by using systems that, that can balance the flow based on need, a little more efficient. We talked about our lighting systems, which are primarily trying to use the right light, more task lighting, less ambient lighting, being more directional. Skylighting and window tinning to reduce loads or increase lighting where we need it. Sometimes difficult in our commercial application, some of our shops, we've been very successful with skylighting to reduce our need to get better ambient lighting, plus it kind of feels better in the area when they're there. The use of remanufactured products, furniture and office partitions examples, stuff that's made, you know, not just, not, sometimes not thought about in a sustainable way, but these are products that we can reuse and, and remanufacture, you know, furniture and some partitions made from recycled rubber, recycled plastic, plastic bags, whatever. We think that that's a sustainable way to go, and there are a lot, a lot more of those products out there, and we certainly look for opportunities to use those. Water conservation is another area, we've done a lot. The first round, we looked at a lot of the fixtures, like the, the low-flow toilets and showerheads and the automatic closing lavatory faucets. In this new phase now, we're looking more at the waterless journals and, and also outdoor water usage in our facilities to see, there's a lot of opportunity there. So we're kind of moving through that next generation. Roofing systems, we're certainly looking for more reflective roofing types and adding insulation where we can to reduce the overall energy use of the building. So that's kind of a, just kind of a brief look at the way we're doing business now. It's kind of a change for us, a little bit of a change. We've done some of the stuff in the HVAC systems and our lighting, but now we're looking at some of these other areas and expanding as we get more knowledge and as frankly, this material and information becomes available to us. The one that I also, I think I skipped over, that was up there, was the, we're looking at the hydroelectric, the reactivation of hydroelectric facility at Cater, to see if we can get that back on, and it's budgeted in this coming year's '08 budget. We're going to do two kind of feasibility studies. One is a regulatory feasibility study to see what's going to be required from a regulatory nature, because that sits on federal land, and there was an issue that it used to be a federal project, and we don't want to make it a federal project again. And then the second one, if we get over that first hurdle, is then technically what do we do to, to, what do we take to actually become a, a part of our arcade facility? I'm viewing it more as a, as kind of a cogeneration facility, not as a, a power plant that's going to generate power out of the grid, so once, once you do that, you kind of come the utility, and we're trying to avoid that process, because we're going to use all the power onsite, and we think that'll make a difference for us, so. Anyway, those are just kind of a quick view of some of the things we're doing and what to look forward to, and it's, it's kind of exciting. We've got a new facilities manager who's been moving into this area, and we've got a, a new superintendent who's feeling pretty excited about this, and we're, and we're learning enough and a lot as we're going along, so we hope to get better and better in the, in the months ahead, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That's really good. Ms. Falcone, Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, I'm wildly impressed. I mean, this has really come a very, very, very long way. In, in relatively short period of time, we've, I'm, I'm curious about the, the large project that you talked about, about the Corporation Yard. It's an enormous part, that's a lot of solar panels, so I'm wondering how, I didn't see any cost estimates for that, and I know you're going to come back with all of this more detailed information, but I'm wondering if you could just sort of ballpark it, I'm sure you've thought about it? And also, what kind of an amortization life are we talking about here? I mean, I, I don't want you to stop anything, I mean, go full speed ahead and it's going to, but, but it's expensive, and it takes a long time to pay itself off, and I'm, I'm really very disappointed that in the forty years that solar has been out there, that this equipment hasn't become more obtainable, and it hasn't, like, everything supposedly comes down, computers, refrigerators, you know, all that stuff, but this doesn't seem to have followed that pattern, and it's very frustrating. So it is still expensive. Maybe you could just give me a little bit of...
Yes, Mayor Bloom, Councilwoman Falcone, yeah, we have a preliminary number. We, we think the project's three, three and a half million dollar range, fairly expensive. I mean, that's why you don't see a lot of these done, but we're hoping with the million-dollar rebate and the tax credits and the accelerated depreciation, that makes it more affordable. You know, we'll, we'll know when we see the numbers, which we're kind of desperately waiting for this week. You're right, the, the costs haven't come down as much as we thought they, they would, but we think projects like this will establish it as more of a main, mainstream technology. I think it's a little bit of supply and demand, and when, when people see that there are more people buying and more people being in the business, to be more competition, I think the costs will come down.
That's the theory, we hope. And, and I think it's a fabulous project, don't get me wrong at all, but I think we do have a responsibility to at least acknowledge that it is expensive to do.
And just to clarify, kind of how these, these big solar systems work is, it will be built and financed by a private entity who will then be able to take advantage of the tax credits and depreciation that Tony was talking about, and then we will have an agreement with them to buy the power over like a twenty or thirty-year period, and then we take our energy savings and use that, the energy savings, you know, basically we pay them a certain amount, and, and most of that will come from our energy savings. There will probably be, when we've looked at this, an increase in cost to us, but it'll be relatively small, you know, we're getting a whole new solar package, so. And we'll run those numbers, in fact, as I discussed with you before, Mr. Ferguson is our expert on the cost-benefit analyses, is we're going to go to the finance committee and walk them through it. The good thing about it is, we don't have to come up with the three million dollars. The private entity does that and finances it, but then we have to agree to buy the power from the system over a set period of time, and then we use our energy savings to pay for most of it, and then there's, there'll probably be an, an increase in cost, but not that considerable.
Okay, it's almost like a lease with an option to purchase or something like that in some ways, but you'd be, the savings is what you purchase.
What really makes it work is that the private sector can take advantage of these tax credits, and it really makes it work. Otherwise, it just, the, the cost, we could never, we could never do it.
Yeah, we've been trying, and it's been very hard. Mr. Horton?
Well, I'm just, I want to add my congratulations to what, what you're showing us here, because I think it's right in line with what council wants, and having said that, I'd like to move that we approve the twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollar increase. Second.
Ooh, lots of seconds. Okay. Any more discussion, anybody? All those in favor, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Very good. Thanks for all that work. You're doing a great job. Item eighteen.
Item number eighteen, conference with legal counsel pending litigation.
Okay. Item eighteen, we're closed session, then we'll be back for item nineteen.
We're going to call the meeting back to order and we're out of our closed session. There's nothing to report out, and so we are on to item number 19.
Item number 19, standalone election, proposed charter amendment changing the city's general municipal election from odd to even years and other potential charter amendments.
Okay, Mr. Lopez.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Marcelo Lopez, I'm the Administrative Services Director. We have a three-part presentation this afternoon. I'm going to be joined by our City Clerk's manager, Cindy Rodriguez, in part of the presentation, and your city attorney, Steve Wiley, will cover also a portion of the presentation.
Okay.
Let me give you a quick overview. This council agenda reports deals with three issues. One, the issue of conducting a general election, a municipal general election this fiscal year, and whether or not that be a traditional or a poll, a vote by mail, a traditional poll or a vote by mail election. Secondly, to receive a report and to provide direction on the matter of a potential charter amendment to change the city's election from an odd to an even-year calendar. And third is to receive a report on other potential charter amendments that have been discussed and considered either by council or by the staff in the past. In terms of background, back in March of 2006, the council established what they called a Municipal Election Reform Subcommittee. And the committee held several meetings. And back in November 14th, 2006, the committee presented a report back to the city council, and in response, the city council referred the matter to the ordinance committee. Simply, the council asked the ordinance committee to consider and provide recommendations on the possibility of a campaign disclosure ordinance. Two, that the ordinance committee provide recommendations for a candidate video program, since we named the candidate video program. And lastly, to consider either a vote-by-mail or a poll election should the city decide to conduct its own election. On January 9th, the ordinance committee discussed the plans and decided that we should hold a work session, and recommended to the city council that we hold a work session to discuss the matter of the standalone election and to discuss the pros and cons of a vote-by-mail versus a traditional poll election. The ordinance committee also directed the staff to handle these issues on separate tracks. One, that the standalone election and the proposed charter amendment be handled in a consolidated fashion. Secondly, that the video of the, that the campaign disclosure ordinance and the candidate video be discussed on a separate track. The committee recently discussed this, and we are coming back to the city council to discuss that latter item at a future meeting. But the question is, why are we discussing the city conducting its own election? Well, frankly, it's because the costs provided by the county for conducting an election for the city have substantially increased. The county's estimates for the 2007 election is somewhere between $550,000 and $650,000 for them to do it for us. In comparison, the county of Ventura proposes to charge the city of Ventura approximately $95,000 to conduct a comparable election with a higher number of registered voters. We have approximately 43,000, 45,000 registered voters in the city of Santa Barbara. The county of Ventura has 50 or more voters, but that's a comparison for the discussion purposes. On January 29th, staff presented to the city council an option to conduct our own election. We presented a work plan, a pretty detailed work plan with the steps that are necessary if we, should we decide to embark on that, on conducting our own election. We estimate that if the city conducts an election, it will cost us approximately $300,000. And that's the higher end of our estimate if we do a poll election. If we do a vote-by-mail election, it would be approximately 17% less, at least those are our cost estimates. This would mean that if we do our own election, we would save anywhere between $250,000 to $350,000 as opposed to contracting with the county. At the council work session, the council also directed the staff to conduct research to figure out whether or not there's any information on the possible effects of a vote-by-mail election. And principally, the discussion centered on the matter whether or not it has a disproportionate effect on certain populations. At that time, we discussed the impact that it may have on low-income individuals and Hispanics. And as requested by the council, we proceeded to look for information, and I must tell you that there is information on the effects of a vote-by-mail election, but there is little information, or no information that we could find, that really dealt with the issue of, does it have a disproportionate effect or negative effect on significant segments, as we discussed earlier, on minorities, on low-income individuals. So, we did not have a lot of information on that, on that topic. The city of Burbank, as an example, they were able to provide us information on their overall results, which really indicated that the results of a vote-by-mail election is that it increases voter participation. Where we found information, it all pointed to an increase in voter participation. The state of Oregon also, you know, conducts vote-by-mail, and we looked at some of their information. One study entitled "Five Years Later: A Reassessment of Oregon's Vote-by-Mail Electoral Process", it showed that 81% of the voters preferred, for election type, preferred the vote-by-mail election-type system, but they did not have any information on any disproportionate effect on any significant segments. In summary, the information that we received to date is that there is, it did not, vote-by-mail did not reveal any negative impact that was measurable. Perhaps there might be in other situations, but the information that we looked at, which is from the state of Washington, from the state of Oregon, did not reveal any negative effect on a significant segment population. So, we've gone, Cindy Rodriguez and I, and staff from the city clerk's office, have visited other places where vote-by-mail elections have been conducted. Recently, we went to the city of Burbank, and we saw its operation, and it was pretty smooth and pretty interesting. The whole validation process of the signatures were very interesting, very effective and very efficient. But even though I'm talking a lot about the vote-by-mail process, I want to make sure that from staff's perspective, we recognize that this is a city council policy decision. Staff is not advocating one type of system over the other. We recognize and respect the policy decision that the city council needs to make, and we're ready to go either way. If you decide to go with a vote-by-mail election, we're prepared to do that. If you decide to go with a poll election, we are prepared to do that also. There is a variation, or there are certain elements of the vote-by-mail process that doesn't make it purely a vote-by-mail process. And that being that there would be some drop-off points. And we anticipate that if you went through, if you decided on a vote-by-mail election, we would have approximately five drop-off points, where people could actually come in and vote there if they wanted to, or if they chose not to mail their ballot, they could give it to someone there, a poll worker, on any, on the day of the election, at one of the five sites that would be assigned for this purpose. In comparison, however, a poll election would have approximately 20 different poll places. Okay? That is an overview of the council agenda report that's before you, and we're prepared to answer any questions that you may have on that particular portion of the report.
Yeah, did we get the number 20 because that's what the county does in the city election? Wasn't quite sure. Polling places.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Actually, the code allows for up to 2,500 per precinct and with the number of registered voters. That's how we came up with the number 20, but also, we did confirm that number with the county, and it is the same number.
That's the same number as they use, okay. Mr. House?
Just a question to that last point that you're just making with the drop-off points. There's, I guess, two different ways somebody could vote at a drop-off point. One would be to actually drop off their mail ballot instead of putting it in the US mail.
That's correct.
And the other would be to go there and vote as we would normally do at a polling place on the election day.
That is also correct.
The drop-off, that wouldn't be restricted to the dropping off your ballot instead of mailing it, and that wouldn't be restricted to the voting day, would it, at the drop-off points? I mean, where could you bring your ballot if you didn't want to mail it, I guess is my question.
The five designated drop-off centers that we've determined, we were going to locate those centrally in northern, southern, eastern portions of the city, and then also City Hall. Those would be, could be dropped off on the day of the election. They also could be dropped off, we are going to open those centers on the Saturday prior to Election Day, which is November 3rd, and those centers will be open from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then also, City Hall will be open from the day the voters receive their ballots up into Election Day, and we will also be able to accept the ballots at that.
So, anytime after receiving your vote-by-mail ballot, you could drop it off physically at the City Hall?
Correct.
And then there's some specific times where the drop-off points on the Saturday before would be available as a drop-off point as well.
Right.
And then lastly, somebody could come on Election Day and actually vote there as they would normally at a polling place.
That's correct.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a couple people who would like to speak. Would you like to, Mr. Williams, or you just flipped on for a second? David Pritchett?
If someone votes at the location, it would have to be a provisional ballot, correct? And those are typically more easily challengeable in subsequent counting. How can we make sure that the provisionals that are cast at the poll are, and I've seen provisionals thrown out just because their signature has changed in 20 years, or for fairly insignificant reasons? What can we do to make sure that we're counting as many of those provisionals as possible?
Yeah, Ms. Rodriguez?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Williams, the, it wouldn't necessarily be a provisional vote. Remember, somebody that, a voter that received their ballot actually could go to any center and actually participate as a regular poll. It will be manned with poll workers, just like a regular election. All the ballots that we receive on Election Day will be handled exactly like a regular ballot, with the exception of, of course, if it is a provisional where somebody is issued a provisional, where they walk in at a designated drop-off center and say, "I lost my ballot", or, you know, whatever the excuse might be. We would be able to issue a provisional ballot at that location, and it would be handled in the same fashion it would be handled, any other ballot would be handled. We would go through the exact same process of verifying the signature and making sure that it matches, and if there is a problem, then we would, at that time, we would do the normal process that the county does, is save that, and then we would check on that at a later date, which would probably be like the Friday after the election, by that date.
Okay. Okay. David Pritchett will be followed by Dr. Phillips. Turn on the microphone, for help.
Good afternoon. David Pritchett, just speaking as a Westside resident and continuous voter for the last 12 years. I missed a special school board once when I lived in Ojai, so I'll admit to that. We have three questions for discussion, and this afternoon, I wrote a note to myself that if the postal ballot were within 20% of the cost difference of a traditional polling-place ballot, then my recommendation, although it's pretty soft, is that the traditional polling-place ballot should be done. And I heard Mr. Lopez say... And I heard Mr. Lopez say their best estimate is a 17% difference. So according to my self-made policy, I'm recommending a traditional polling place ballot if for any reason that it maintains a similar style of voting because based on the other items, it's a, it might be a one-time occurrence for either one. So in your second question, the recommendation is whether city elections should be in even years instead of the current pattern for odd years. It may have made sense in 1978 or whenever that was to go to odd years, but this is the internet age. Getting a message out for an election is a much different universe of reality. And I strongly recommend shifting to the even-year cycle if for any reason, we all know it will increase voter participation when bundled with the state and federal elections. And it will also save the city potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars per election, even if the county lowers the price, which I guess is still under discussion. So the shift should go to even years as soon as possible. And according to your staff report, you have two options, A and B. And I recommend option A, which is the simplest, most straightforward procedure. And as I understand it, it essentially gives every council member a one-year extension on your term. And I think that's easy for the public to understand. When this would be a charter amendment on the ballot this upcoming November, according to the plan, it's a simple message for the public to understand what is happening, what are the consequences, and why it's a good idea to increase participation and save funding. You all had a good discussion on this during the work session on the 29th of January. Lot of public participation, people aren't here today. But I'd like you all to consider the same message from the public then as what still applies. The shift to even years makes a lot of sense. And it gets the city out of the business of counting the votes by city employees. I think that's an inherent conflict, not that anyone suspects anything outright. And the other point is, the other charter amendments on your agenda, I think are all a good idea to allow people who live outside the city to be on these various committees. In fact, you may even want to consider just having it as a resident of Santa Barbara County or Ventura County could be on these different boards, commissions, committees, not all of them, but, you know, a small number. And that might help with ABR and so on. So even years is a big deal and voter participation is the number-one priority, as you all said at that work session last January. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And Dr. Phillips will be next.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm Dr. Linda Phillips and I'm First Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Santa Barbara. I'm pitch- hitting today for our president Sheila Cami, who has been following these issues but is out of town today. And I want to talk specifically about the question of mail-in elections. The League of Women Voters, of course, is a strong proponent of voting rights, that won't surprise any of you. We support measures that will protect every citizen's right to vote and ensure government's responsibility to protect this right through regulations and procedures that encourage and inform the inactive electorate. We also support local options in implementing the state election code. We have neither a state nor a local position that specifically addresses mail-in elections. But the leagues down in Los Angeles County do have such a position. Their inter-league organization supports mail-in ballots for one-issue elections. That position doesn't apply to us here, of course, but it was the basis for the league's support for mail-in ballots in Burbank. And as you know, after at least a couple of successful one-time trials and an advisory vote of the people, they now have that in their charter. When I asked a member of the Glendale-Burbank League what they'd learned from their experience, she had some useful insights which I'd like to pass on to you. First, she said they were pleased with the results, that running the elections was much easier for the city, and that voter participation had increased slowly but steadily. It's gone, the trend is right. Second, she advised going slowly. If you're considering a permanent change, you should do several one-time elections first to get people used to the idea. And third, there are some technical issues you'll need to address, like working with the post office to facilitate the handling of returned ballots. Burbank's experience would help identify those issues from the points of view of both their city staff and, of course, we're aware that your staff has already had considerable contact with them and they've made a presentation to you as well. But also from the point of view of the League of Women Voters as a good government organization. And we're happy to work with you on that. And I've had an offer from my colleague in the Burbank, Glendale-Burbank League also to talk with us about it. Finally, if you did implement a mail-in election, it would require considerable voter education and outreach and much earlier than for traditional elections. We've already seen that with the high percentage we have here of absentee ballots. And League would be happy, as always, to work with you on the education and outreach. Let me repeat, League does not have a position on your proposal for mail-in elections in Santa Barbara, but I hope these remarks will be useful for you in making your decision.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. We have no further people that wish to speak. I have, did want to note that in our, by the way, very good council report, and there was a lot to it, a lot of meat in here. But I did note that, I think Mr. Williams was the one who had asked about the effect on disenfranchised-type people. And I know you said it differently, maybe underrepresented or whatever. But I noticed in the Oregon, the five-year assessment, and I hadn't seen that before this council agenda report, but it said almost a third of the people, you said 81 preferred the mail-in elections, but almost a third of them reported that they voted more often with vote by mail, particularly women, disabled, homemakers, and those of ages 26 to 38. And I don't know how they got to that, so it's interesting. But if it, it's interesting that it didn't seem to have, well, maybe it did, we just don't know, the 18 to 26-year-olds. Because those are the ones that are always the hardest ones to get engaged in elections. Okay, it's to the council. The first question, I guess, has to do with, Kitty, the city conduct its by poll or by mail? And whether we conduct it, I guess. Mr. Williams?
Well, I still had a question.
Oh, sure.
Just a detail first. Because I'm actually somewhat undecided, which I know is a rare occurrence at the stage of a hearing. But are we going to pay the postage for these, like the county does, so that it comes back no matter what level that is? Because I think that is an important issue that came up when, in Dr. Phillips's comments. Is that
Madam Mayor, council member Williams, our plan and our budget includes paying for the postage to return the ballot.
Okay. And we're going to make sure, and we're going to do something to make sure that that is not a ballot that is so heavy as to be like 80-something cents as the last Ventura ballot was, correct? Because we probably didn't budget that much, did we?
Well, the ballot is the ballot, but we're going to make sure that we make plans to cover the cost to return the ballot to the city. And we have discussed this with the consultants that would be working with us. We have also discussed the fact and include in our plan some outreach to let the voters know if we should change a particular system or when, because we in fact are changing the system. If we do conduct our election, we have to get that information out. So part of our plan includes extensive discussion and public information to let the voters know about the changes, be it polled or vote by mail. It's included in our work plan.
Well, then I'll just start by saying that I definitely think that we should do our own election at this point because we are not being offered a good deal. And the second part, I would say, is what kind of election? At first, I was a little bit alarmed by the talk of a vote-by-mail election. I think there's some good safeguards. The problem is there isn't a whole lot of data. Okay? There's not a whole lot of data for substantially similar communities. Oregon is a lot more monochromatic as a state than California is. I'm not completely sure that it's transferable in methodology. I'm bolstered by the added enthusiasm of young voters. That's, I think, a significant, and I think they only, to answer your question, Madam Mayor, I think there was a bump in both 18 to 25-year-olds and 26 to 38-year-olds.
Okay, I was going to check that.
With 26 to 38-year-olds. The, what I would want is some safeguards to make sure that our underrepresented communities were not disadvantaged by this. I think if we're going to do four drop-in spots, we should require by our ordinance that two of them be in our lowest, low-income census tracts. I think that would be one way to make this, you know, that we're very sure that this would be fair for the future. So I guess I'm leaning in a place I didn't think I would be because the old conventional wisdom, when this was analyzed by the legislature about 20 years ago or 15 years ago, was that this would thoroughly disadvantage minority communities. And they did have data or some methodology at the time. I'm not sure that that holds anymore because it's an entire generation later. And so that's, I think there is some potential. And we should look deeper at this, but we should have some safeguards, such as locating two drop-in spots at our lowest-income census tracts.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, it occurs to me to mention something that maybe it was obvious to us and it isn't necessarily obvious to all, and something that Mr. Pritchard mentioned about having the option to do either mail-in or traditional polling prompts me to say this. If the city were, the council were to direct us to, that the city council wants to look at mail-in elections possibly this year, this will take an implementing ordinance. When we say that we're planning on having places to drop off your ballots and we're planning on mailing it so many days and we're planning on paying the postage, that's going to take an implementing city ordinance. The city charter, interestingly, does expressly authorize mail-in elections. It's been in there for 30 years or so. But beyond that, we don't have any detail. And we're going to need that detail and have it in an ordinance decided by the city council. And I think clearly that ordinance will be a biannual decision for the council, do we do a mail-in election or a traditional poll election? And, you know, we can develop a certain process and stick with it, but there's no reason why the council can't decide a particular election would be one or the other, depending on the ordinance.
Okay. Ms. Focconi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, it's disappointing that we have to have this conversation to begin with. I hoped we could have worked something out with the county and we may still. But I think for 2007, it's come to a point where we have to really sort of fish or cut bait. And the choice of paying the $600,000 or thereabouts amount of money is just, it's untenable. And it's not responsible for us to do that when there are other options and the other option is for us to run our own, as unpleasant as that feels to me because we do have a county elections office. However, we, whether or not we move to odd or even years is really up to, whether we stay with odds or we move to even years, is really up to the people. I mean, that is squarely a charter amendment that would have to be made. So we can say all the reasons why we think that might be a good idea, but at the end of the day, it's going to be up to the folks within the city limits, the voters of Santa Barbara. That being said, I think that to make a drastic change of running our own election is a big enough step to take that if the folks say, yes, we do want to move to even years, then the only election the city of Santa Barbara will run on our own is likely the 2007. Because any subsequent elections would be done at the county in a consolidated fashion and we would be, you know, back in sync with folks. So I don't think it's maybe wise to try to get folks to also consider that the only way that they can vote is through the mail this time. We do have this charter amendment on there and we do want people to pay attention. If we're asking them to absorb quite so much change all at once, we may not get the participation that we really want. It may take a few times to sink in that this is how we're going to do it. So I think I'm defaulting, out of safety, to just having a traditional poll election as normal so that we can really get the participation on this charter amendment and get a clear answer. We certainly don't want the charter amendment, or charter amendments plural, that we'll get to later, to be under suspicion because so many people said, gee, I didn't know what to do. So if we leave as much of it traditional as we can, this may be the only election we end up running, if you think about moving it to the even years. So I'm not quite sure we need to make that decision at this moment to go all mail, vote by mail. And I know that a lot of people have become a lot more comfortable with vote by mail over the years, but there are still folks who don't trust that. So I think that we need to have this full of participation as we possibly can. So that's where I am at the moment, so.
Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You see my green light? Good job.
His light is broken, but he sent me a note that says, "My green light is on." Thank you.
Smoke signals and all. Okay, so just, I'll kind of cut to the chase. Running our own election in the next, in 2007, I support that. The, using option A in the, on this proposed charter amendment, there was the option A and option B. And I recommend option A because it's simpler, it's a one-step shift, doesn't take so long to effect the change. The approach to running our own election, I would base my, like Mr. Pritchett, on my decision or my encouragement on the potential for increased participation. And it appears that all signals are saying to us that participation increases with mail-in type elections, at least locally or nearby Burbank's experience, which has been, you know, over time, but is still increasing. And you gave us quite an interesting chart here that shows a very clear distinction in terms of the voting patterns and the significant increase in participation there. And in Oregon, and the data there shows a significant increase in, you know, it's close to twice participation in some places, and so it's a pretty significant increase. And there's more, well, literally, I guess you could take your absentee ballot if you're an absentee ballot person and you'd ask for one in advance, you could take that in any time, I guess, up to an election. I think there's, you can get it in by different ways. But in fact, this way with mail-in, anybody could bring their ballot in for a whole range of time and have different options to participate in voting, except maybe they're out of town and they didn't ask for an absentee ballot. I mean, there's lots of ways to vote here. And I tend to think the mail-in ballot would be a real boost and a little bit of extra education could maybe be a very positive thing for groups that don't, haven't yet participated as fully as they could. So I feel very good about the idea of using the mail-in ballot. And actually, people are using absentee more and more and more and more and more. So we've seen the trend anyway. Even year, if people want Even year if people want it, that's going to be on the ballot. I think it should be on the ballot as a choice. And then if people decide it... But if not, if they decide not to go to even year, for some reason the voters decide to stay with the odd year, we would have developed in 2007 some acumen with regards to running our own elections, and I don't see a downside to that. Sounds good. The other charter amendments that we have identified here in the staff report, things we've been discussing, I'm eager to see those be put together on the ballot for the voters to decide on.
Okay. Mr. Hartley.
It seems to me that the even-year thing is... with the way that we should move, and I think Mr. Pritchett made some good comments on that as far as the way communication goes these days. And I think that even a few years ago, communication via the Internet was not as broad as it is now, but it seems like in our community, there's pretty good participation on the Internet, realizing it's up to the voters, but nevertheless, that seems like the way to go. I think perhaps Cindy... What's our percentage of absentees right now? It's pretty high, isn't it?
Currently, we're at 53%.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, to me, that's a pretty telling number right there. So, coupled with the fact that already over 50% are doing it and the current information, which as Mr. Williams says, the older information maybe didn't support this, but the newer information seems to say that participation improves through all categories of the economic sphere. That makes sense to me to try that. I don't really care whether we do it for '07 or not, but I think we should move in that direction. And then, maybe I'm going to be the only one that's skeptical about doing it ourselves. But I... when I see a department that's set up to do that, and I think about the bureaucratic problems that can develop when you try to do something for the first time and maybe the only time, it just seems difficult to me. I'm not convinced on that one. I listened to the arguments on it, but I'd like to see some other way of handling that. So, that's my thoughts.
Okay. Ms. Schneider.
Thank you. Just first off, I first want to thank the city clerk staff and Mr. Lopez for taking this issue so seriously. This is a basic fundamental right in terms of our right to vote and to look at it in a way of utilizing our public funds wisely is very much appreciative. And, I mean, I frankly think it's pathetic that the county continues to charge such a prohibitive amount of money to conduct an election when they have the department and the equipment and the staff already in place. So, I'm going to... I wanted to preface that because it's very frustrating that we're in the situation that we are. The... So, I think it's perfect... it makes perfect sense under the circumstances that the city conducts its own election this November 2007. I'm also, like Mr. Williams, I've been... I'm on the fence back and forth between a mail-only ballot or a traditional polling place. And I'm tending to agree with Ms. Falcone quite a bit, and also in terms of David Pritchett's point of this... It's not like there's a huge financial savings to go one way or the other. But if we're going to do this once, if we do the charter amendment, which I also agree with putting it on for the voters to decide if we move to an even election, that we've got to keep it simple. And we're already doing our own election for the first time. We're already talking about a charter amendment. To add another component to that that might confuse folks for the first time around, and especially if this is our only time around, I don't know if this is really the year to do it. If for some reason the voters decide that, no, they want the city elections to remain in the odd years, then I think we have to look at that again because then we're looking at, you know, a number of different elections over time. I will say, I know last year, I like going to the polls. I planned to go to the polls on Election Day. That's just how I've always voted. Last year, I found myself I wasn't going to be in town on Election Day. And, you know, I'm not a permanent absentee voter, but you're allowed to within the time period to go to the elections office and vote. So, if, you know, if... That's still an option. So, you know, and I understand 53% of permanent absentee voters, that's fantastic. That's great. But I think that, you know, it's not like if you're not a permanent absentee voter, that only means you can vote on Election Day. There are other options available that you can do that if you found yourself that you were not going to be in town on Election Day. So, I think if people wanted to be able to... They can still vote outside of Election Day. So, I would rather keep it simple. And I... And that's... So, I'm headed towards the keep it as a traditional polling place as opposed to a mail-only. For November '07, we'll see what happens with the charter amendment. The Option A or B in the same vein of keeping it simple, I think Option A is the more appropriate... You're just explaining it once as opposed to doing a whole bunch of different elections over a course of a time. And then the other potential charter amendments, I know we... not everyone got to talk... I'll just start that one. The City Advisory Group Subcommittee, one of the things we talked about because a number of different commissions were saying, here's an idea and here's an idea, all requiring charter amendments, when you could have one blanket amendment that says, "The number residency requirements and qualifications of members of boards and commissions shall be decided by ordinance from the mayor and city council." And just that in the charter will answer the question about ABR, the waterfront, the harbor commission. I guess we'd need to have a separate charter amendment formally combining the Parks Commission and the Recreation Commission because that's wording in the charter. But as opposed to having a whole bunch of different charter amendments on each and every commission, I think a statement that's saying this is basically under the purview under ordinance of the councils is probably the easiest way to go in trying to educate what it is we're trying to do. So, that would be the way I would suggest, looking forward to that. So... But again, thank you very much. It's the... Like the mayor said, it was an amazing... It's a great council agenda report, and the workshop from past January was very helpful. And I'm learning a lot as we go along with all these details.
Okay. Mr. Burnwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really... I have to tip my hat to Mr. Williams because he knows so much more about this stuff than I do on... It had both a superficial level as well as a deep level. And I was on the fence also about whether we should mail-in or whether we should have a traditional one. And it's only recently that I have... I've tipped to the other side of the fence from the way Mr. Williams went, and I... If we were in a process of setting up a program for many years to come, I'm totally there with the mail-in. But the whole idea that we're only hoping to do this one time troubles me a little bit that we're starting a whole new program. And I think some of the people that might be most confused would not just necessarily be the people who would go to the traditional ballot. It would be the absentee voters, who we already have 53% of, the absentee voters going, oh my God, well, can I steal mail in my absentee? Or do I have to get another kind of... This is mail-in? Is this a different mail-in thing? I think that there would be confusion that would be unnecessary. And that's kind of where I'm coming from. It's just an unnecessary confusion on this... a potential unnecessary confusion for this particular election. And if we're lucky enough to get the electorate to agree to get us in even years, then we'll never do it again. And if we're unlucky in that regard and we have to do an odd years, then we go forward with force and educate people over a course of time on that. So, that's the way I'm falling on that issue. On item number A... Excuse me. What do we do about the changing the odd to even year? It changes our tenure here, and I'm... I lend for the reasons that Ms. Schneider just said on the A proposal. I think A is a simpler way to go. And certainly, I also, having sat on these things with... along with Ms. Schneider regarding the other potential charter amendments, it seems to me that if we were sharp about our wording, we might gather them all into one single charter document... charter amendment, which says something to the effect that the council... correction. I'm not going to attempt to write it, but "Issues of residency, experience, and formation of boards and commissions within the city shall be at the direction of the council." So that we've... We're talking about how they're formed, who's in them, everything else. If that were possible, I think we could save a lot of confusion also. Certainly, two of them can be consolidated, I think. But I think we might even be able to put the third one there because we're talking about the same thing, which is our boards and commissions. Does the council have a right to form boards and commissions, name them, let people in, let people out, et cetera? And I think we might be able to craft it in one way. I'd certainly like to. And have it be a... Have it be a set of phrases that's more... I don't want to say street lingo, but common language rather than legalese. We got caught up in legalese the last time we did it, and I think, you know, we all got lost in that. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I answered all those questions.
Well, and we probably should... I don't know if you're going to need to look... Mr. Wiley, I'm looking at Mr. Wiley, into whether or how it can be crafted or... I'm sure you will, but...
Well, I have some thoughts on that. I don't know if you want me to get into that now.
Well, we'd have to come back with it, but go ahead.
Right. The membership of the boards and commissions, the charter boards and commissions, is actually established in a general section. And then the exceptions to that, for example, the airport commission allows non-city residents. That's actually in the airport commission section. So, I don't think we ever needed a bunch of different questions on the ballot about the separate boards and commissions. It's real... I think it's Section 800 of the charter that says you... that all... Unless otherwise expressly provided, all board and commission members shall be city electors. That's the sentence that we would change, and what I'm hearing is a suggestion that the sentence would be revised to say, "The membership on the boards and commissions shall be determined by ordinance of the city council," or qualifications for membership on the boards and commission. I would suggest that you might want to leave it at the residency requirements because if, in my experience, if you get too broad with this, it becomes controversial and it becomes difficult.
That's right. That's right. No, good... Good... Good point. I just wanted to point out that it looks like 53% voted absentee last time, but 47% or something like that are actually permanent absentees. There's a difference. I think we got mixed up up here. Ms. Rodriguez.
Madam Mayor, we... Our records show, and we did verify with the county, that we have 53% of our voters are permanent absentee voters.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. I thought I read 20,000 out of 40... 43,000, so... But that's okay. That's still a huge number. Okay. Well, as to the council, we have... I think we have three different questions. Do you want to do it that way?
Madam Mayor, if I may.
First question? Okay, go ahead, sure.
My apologies. But there is one additional department that requested a change to the charter, and that's for the Public Works Department. That's not included in your council agenda report, but it's a request that came in. And basically, what they're looking at is adding wastewater collection and treatment under the purview of the Board of Water Commissioners. That's the only change. They want to add water... wastewater collection and treatment.
Oh, interesting. Okay. That wasn't in the...
That's in the charter? Some contrary thought is in the charter?
It currently... It's just limited right now to water issues. It doesn't specifically refer to wastewater.
Well...
When I looked at the track change in the proposal, wastewater, you know, just stood out in the blue ink.
So, can I... So, I'm the liaison to the Water Commission, and they regularly handle all of the sewer water issues. So, what you're asking for is just a change in the charter to make what they're doing legal?
Legal. I didn't want to say that. I did for you. I didn't want to say that. We don't want them to be illegal, do we? That would kind of be it, yeah. Mr. Armstrong or Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, I'm... To be honest, this is... I didn't know about this. And I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, well, we'll talk about it.
And the reason is, Section 813 of the charter, which is the section that establishes the responsibilities of the Board of Water Commissioners. And it is true, it is all about water, not about wastewater, except but then the last subsection, F, "Perform such other functions or duties not inconsistent with this charter as may be prescribed by ordinance." That's your... So, you can do that by ordinance.
Okay. Okay, good.
Well, Madam Mayor, to move...
I just...
Oh, I was going to say, you wanted to pick those three.
Yeah. I was going to say something of my own about mail-in ballots. Just that I really... I think it's something that we ought to be looking into because so many... And we are. So many absentee ballots are happening that way. And I see the, you know, the line going up in those cities and states where they have absentee ballots or they have mail-in ballots. I just think it's sort of the wave of the future. I agree, though, that... And I had written a little note to myself, not in '07, because it seems like we need to focus on our own city election, which means we're going to have to get a consultant to help us run it and all that sort of thing. And we also want to talk about that charter. That's what I want to focus on. If I have to go around town, talk... the charter amendment, if I have to go around town talking about where to mail things, it's just going to be... It's just not going to be where we want our focus to be this November. But I would hope that if we decided to still have our elections in odd years, that that subject would come right back up here and we'd talk about it again. Because I think it, in the future, it may... It may be a very good choice for us. So, that's where I am. Did you want to make a motion, Mr. Burnwell? Can we do three different things? Whether the city runs an election or not?
Okay. Well, I would like to... I'll start with the easy one.
You could put them together if you can craft a gorgeous motion here.
A gorgeous motion.
An elegant.
I would like to move the council approval of a traditional standalone election with polling places of Option A insofar as the odd-to-even-year correction of our tenures and a... that the city attorney, as best he can, consolidate the other three charter amendments and include them also on the ballot.
The only thing I didn't hear is whether the city will run it.
Oh, and the city runs it, yeah. To heck with it.
And whether the charterman...
Yeah. Charter amendments.
Oh, yeah. Option A, that's right. Well, no, odd and even year... Yeah. Okay. I got it.
I think I got it.
A little slow here.
I think I got it.
I'm hungry. Okay. Okay. Is there a second? There was? Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Williams, you have your light on.
Well, I'm just really pleased to hear the discussion today and really just proud of the council and hearing your discussion, how thoughtful everybody was, and that you would have... We would all have so much regard for participation, to give it some real soul-searching. And I do believe that in elections, we should always err on the side of inclusion and probably caution. So, I can... I can support the motion. The one thing that I hope that we will do is some... is make sure that early voting, as Councilmember Schneider mentioned, is included because I don't know if you guys have that in your costs yet, but early voting on the weekend before, I think, is really important that we... It's important that we don't stake a step backward of not offering the kind of voting services the county currently does.
Yeah. I thought that was going to be part of the mail-in ballot.
Isn't that part... I mean, it would be just like any other election, right? If you have...
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Wiley.
Madam Mayor, the thing about a traditional poll election is it's all laid out in the elections code and even detailed regulations. So, if, you know, a lot of cities, and even the elections code is still written this way, directed to city clerks about what they need to do for traditional poll elections. So, we don't need an implementing ordinance to do that, and we can't do anything different than the state elections code. It... Well, basically, we can't without an... As a charter city, we can do a few things, but not on this point. The running, the conduct of an election is really going to be laid out in the elections code for a traditional poll election. And we would only need an implementing ordinance for the detail of a mail-in election, which... At some point, I want to make sure I understand the motion with respect to the charter amendments. And I don't know if that's a...
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I heard we go with Option A, so we'll proceed with preparing an ordinance to place that on the ballot in November of 2007. And three charter amendments, if I understand correctly, one of which would be to revise... It's actually Section 802 of the city charter, to allow the council to determine the qualifications... Well, let's see, the residency qualifications for memberships on charter boards and commissions by ordinance. The second charter amendment would be to combine the Parks Commission with the Recreation Commission. And the third amendment would be to increase the Harbor Commission from five members to to seven members.
Just a question, Mr. Wiley, why could we not, in the first one that you mentioned, just say, as one charter amendment, that the council can by ordinance determine the residency requirements and number of members? Include those in any...
I would just say that we do start getting into dangerous territory there, just in perception, because the perception is, well, okay, well, they're going to be like Caligula and start appointing horses to boards, or whatever, you know? Like, you know, that if we, if we don't spell out anything in code, then it just sounds like we're in a power grab, and I don't think that, I mean, I think...
I have to say, I lived through two attempts to amend the charter to gender-neutralize it.
That's right.
That were defeated.
That's right.
So I get leery about exactly that, yeah.
Can I go back to saying yes to what you just...
Okay, good. Yes, that's the motion.
Okay, so we were saying, oh, Mr. Casey...
Then I would just ask one consideration as part of the neighborhood preservation ordinance, and creating the new board and the existing architectural board review, having nine members, there was discussion about having the architectural board go to seven as a more manageable number. That would require a charter amendment, if you wanted to pursue that.
Which I think is a really good idea, so, and we did talk about that.
We're running the risk of having a whole litany of stuff on this ballot, and as you correctly pointed out, we really want our focus to be in a particular place, to get an honest answer out of folks, and all of these things are really important. And yes, we did want to, we did talk about that at the ordinance committee, but I'm just, I'm getting a little, because we still don't have any idea what type or how many initiatives, remember, there are always looming initiatives out there that we don't know about until they are brought to us. No, 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 Mr. Barnwell.
We just, don't look him in the building, and we'll be fine.
I'm just, you know, throwing a cautionary note, that we're getting a little long in the ballot here.
Maybe what we can do is come back with a list, and then we can decide that, Mr. Armstrong?
And our main intent here was to see if you wanted to have some other potential charter amendments on the ballot in addition to the issue about going to the even-year elections, and then we can come back and, again, list out the items that are on there, and maybe have a more time for thorough discussion. We do have a couple months on that issue that we can come back to.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, we've been here since two, so it is a little bit much, but I'm glad you reminded us. I wondered why you were sitting back there, I thought you were just enjoying it.
Well, if we, if we could, Madam Mayor, let's talk about that motion, and that last portion of it. What are we directing staff to do? To, we seem to have some resolve on A versus B, and we have resolve on doing a regular poll election.
And city-run election.
And a city-run, regular election, but we don't seem to yet have enough staff input to talk about how many charter amendments.
What else would be on the ballot? What else? And so, and it seems to me your motion is for city-run, for our tenure A, selection A, and for regular, traditional election.
Traditional city-run polling election, yes.
And then maybe we can have back, and as soon as we can get it together, what's going to be on the ballot?
If I could be so bold to maybe suggest that you modify your motion to say, direct staff to return for further discussion about potential charter amendments.
My thoughts precisely.
But if staff can come back on what the ballot will look like.
Good, yes.
The second are agree?
Yes.
I think, okay, about five people agreed to be seconders. Anyway, so, we have a motion and a second. Does everybody understand what they're...
I just had one more...
Your light is on, I had no idea.
Yes, that's okay.
Mr. House?
Yes, because I had been so outspoken about participation in the mail-in ballot, I still feel very strongly about it, but I recognize the validity of us keeping things steady as you go for this one election. But if the voters don't... Absolutely. ... choose to put us on even years, I really want this to come back so we can work on it, because if we're going to conduct these year after year after year, there could be some growing benefit of being on a mail-in ballot, so...
So on election night, you and I will...
That's right. We'll be there with the commentary.
We'll be there.
But I support your motion.
Okay. Any other discussion?
You'll be there with the commentary? What? You'll be out in my headquarters getting people out to vote, right?
That's right. Okay, we're voting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, it's unanimous, very good.
All right.
We are going to adjourn to Monday, April 30th, at 1:30 for a site visit to 514 State Street. Thank you.
Do you see, do you have a...
Dance permit?